September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is five thirty and we have a full board with us this evening, including Dulcie LaBoma, Rob Nato, Norm Gupel, Andrea Folsom, myself, Jim O'Brien, and our two student reps, Juliette Chahade and Max Afrin. And with us is Michelle Clark, our business administrator, our superintendent, Mike Flynn, and our executive assistant, Joni Condon. I think I got everybody. I did great. All right, so we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Rob, since you can see the flag, can you lead us?
Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have two sets of meeting minutes to approve tonight, so.
So to clarify, we left those in the digital folder, if you remember. If you need a hard copy of the non-public, we have those in your folder. So that's the difference. The public was on the folder and that's there.
Awesome. So the meeting minutes, who I've been meeting, from August tenth, is that correct?
Yes. No?
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on those?
Sure. Just try to spell check, they spell Dulcie's name wrong everywhere.
Yeah.
Maybe they should just go back and change her name.
Sure.
That's it.
Sorry.
Thank you, Norm. Any other, any other changes?
I can read them.
All those, is there, did we do a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I second your criticism.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? All right. And then we have the same date of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. We have non-public minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Perfect. All right. So we are gonna move on to comments by the school board as well as our student reps, and we are going to start with our student representatives.
Do you mind if I go first?
Oh, please, yeah.
Yeah, so I wanna, this is, Max was here last time, but Juliette's here this time. So I wanna welcome them. You're gonna be hearing a lot more from them this year. As you can see, they're gonna be a standing item on the agenda. They've been working with administration to solicit feedback from the student body, not only just at the middle high school, but they're gonna be working with the principals at the lower, excuse me, lower elementary schools as we get rolling. And you're gonna be hearing updates, concerns, all that's gonna be through the student voice, which is something that we found very important. And I don't think you can have two better students here to represent the student body. So you guys, thanks for coming, and it's your turn.
Welcome, Juliette. Again, thanks for joining us a second year. We're really happy to have you.
Thank you. So I just wanna start with saying that I think this school has done a wonderful job of, you know, just schooling COVID. I know that masks are kind of controversial things, but I think in general, I think it's like, everybody is fine with masks because they say they're keeping masks in schools and everyone just wants them on all year. So I think that that's been going very well.
So speaking of things that, I guess, have been going pretty well is the science teachers. I'd like to congratulate them on rolling with everything that's been happening this year with having a classroom start of the year. They've done a wonderful job trying to keep our classes running and I think they've done a great job doing that.
So, you know, a lot of our students is homecoming. Everybody wants to know what's happening with that. And I think there's definitely not like to be a dance, but there are questions about whether to be a parade or if you went out to a pep rally and safety concerns and those things. So that's something I just wanted to bring up.
Yeah, and speaking of bringing up things, the Chromebooks have been a big topic of discussion. A lot of students not being too thrilled about what technology they have to use in school. So it's just been a topic of discussion among the students that wanted to bring them.
Yeah.
Perfect. And when, when they do bring concerns, sometimes I'll address them directly. A lot of times, we're actually meeting now, so we have a, we have a meeting and they brought those forward, but they wanted to discuss it publicly, which I think is outstanding as student reps. We are gonna talk about Chromebooks later in the board meeting, so we're not gonna talk about it now. And then I know with homecoming, I've heard about it quite a bit coming through my office now. So we're definitely gonna be working with Mr. Kelly and Ms. Gagnon to work, like you said, we said a couple of weeks ago, we wanna start to bring the events back, but we have to make sure that we're managing them safely and appropriately. And when I say safely now, most people jump to COVID, and that's not necessarily what we mean by safety as administration. We mean coming and going, perimeters, monitoring students. So just making sure that when we say safety, it's actually more than just masks and COVID. It has a lot to do with, I'll call it the, the background work. So we're definitely gonna work on that and I'll address the technology issue later.
Max, do you have something else you wanna say?
Um, I think that was it. I mean, there's been some questions about parking, but I don't think that the school board might be the right form for that. I don't consider that.
I agree.
Apparently at the high school, so I think I'll reserve that purpose to Gagnon.
Good instinct. Look, you are, you know what comes here and what stays there, and that stays right there with them. So we'll work on that for sure.
Well, thanks again. And during the, during board meetings, I'm gonna make it a point to, to look over to you guys, and if you have something you wanna add to the conversation, just, just give me a high sign. We definitely wanna bring your voices in, so thank you. So I'm gonna turn to the school board. Any comments for tonight? Don't jump all at once.
No, I think as a board member to the district, my condolences to the Bluet family for their treasure loss from the last, last week to them and their family and to the whole district. Just wanna recognize that.
Anybody else? All right. So we'll move on from board comments to, under current business, we'll start with school board goals. In our packet, we have, I think the, I wanna say conclusion, 'cause that's not the right term, but we have a write-up of the goals that we spoke about our, our last meeting. So I don't know if folks have had a chance to review the language that we agreed to then, but if there's any changes, edits, or anything that's confusing or not, exactly as you recall it, we could, we can discuss that now, and if not, when we're all done that, we'll have a motion to approve those and move on to superintendicals. So I guess my first question is, is there any, any edits or, or changes that anybody wants to make to these? And we're still all comfortable with them?
Yeah.
That's a good place to start. All right, so if there's no changes, I would ask if there's a motion to adopt the school board goals as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion? I just, I think Andrew just said it quietly, but that, it's exciting, but I'm very excited that, this is the first time I've been on a, a public board in which we've set clear, realistic, achievable goals for the board for the year, so it is pretty exciting to see, you know, it's coming to consensus on, it's great, so I'm excited by it.
And I, I acquiesce to you, Jim, because some of the things on here that I, I advocate, since I've been on the board, is being a CIP plan, a outlook on, on budgeting, and just to see that for us abilities as a resource, commitment to the community, is something that is just awesome and something that I feel as a board member is a goal beyond goals for me right now. So I commend this board and our superintendent on taking that goal on because it's something this community has significantly asked for. So, thank you.
All right, no more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Flynn to talk about superintendent goals and how those relate to the school board.
Sure, I'm gonna backpedal first to school goals. Now that you've locked them in, I wanna talk about the work that's already started and where we're going to go. So two big things is the strategic plan, another first for us as a district. So since we talked about it, believe it or not, if you can reel back all the way to July for our retreat, maybe it was June, I think, we talked about how it was gonna become a priority for us to have a plan for five years and how it's gonna tie to CIP, it's gonna tie to all these things, all the work that we're doing. So I've already received two quotes on that in regards to strategic planning, and I'm gonna work with Michelle on a couple avenues on how to support that because clearly it wasn't budgeted for previously. So once we figure out and finalize that, I'll come back to the board to explain the next steps. Both proposals have us wrapping up probably around December or January with a document in our hand, which is pretty quick work for a strategic planning process. But for the community, the parts, that'll be a part of it, there'll be outreach groups. One thing that COVID has taught us is Zoom, significantly not just in our profession but in the public. So there'll be Zoom sessions, it won't, you know, we won't have to get together, those types of things. So depending on which company we, we go with, there's different maps to that success, and once we finalize it, I'll, I'll share it with the public. Update on that.
Mike, can you just explain to the, for our folks listening, why we're going outside, much like the same reason why we went outside when we did the superintendent church? So just so people understand why this isn't an in-house, but rather.
Yeah, so sometimes when you do internal operations, you get stuck internally on your own thoughts, your own processes, your own, your facilities, you say, well, there's nothing wrong with that, I've been here for twenty years. Bringing an outside lens drives that conversation a little bit deeper. They ask more poignant questions that won't hurt anyone's feelings or try and drive someone in a direction, maybe politically, whatever it may be. So having an outside lens really clears that slate and allows the discussion and the development of a strategic plan to be more wholehearted, i- is the better way to say it.
Thank you.
The second part I wanna talk about your goals, and I'm excited about, is the curriculum committee work, the curriculum assessment committee that we're forming. In your board packet is the curriculum committee charter about how and what we're gonna generally do. So each committee that's a board level committee has several responsibilities, whether it's finance or building or policy. And seeing that this is new, it's really to discuss and drive the curriculum that goes on in the district. Not that the, the curriculum has ever been an issue, but I call it, it's just that next level checks and balance. And it allows things to get approved, not approved, sent back, kicked down for more work, and it also opens that avenue again of community lens, board lens, professional lens, and it has those levels of discussion. Now, it's in its infancy here, so to go into the depth of what we're gonna do or how we're gonna do it, it's, it's not fair to anybody, but once that committee forms, and I've looked at guidance from you guys on who's gonna chair it, from there we'll establish norms, goals, and that's what we'll report back on, what the goals will be, what the objectives will be, and really kinda set a timeline, kinda what you did essentially with policy on how many we wanna do. Curriculum would set some objectives for the year, and, and, and why I'm excited about is I've been living it now for ten years in Timberlake and Hampson, I've been on the curriculum committee forever. A lot of great stuff comes out of there. New math programs or new intervention programs, new courses come through curriculum. Now, we have, we have the curriculum council, that's not going anywhere, let's be very clear. It's, it's another layer, right? So it goes from curriculum council to curriculum committee and really the board. It just, it's, it's those checks and balances that are important to districts, same as any policy that's created, it goes to the committees for vetting, then it comes here, same thing. So it, it's just another level, but it also goes the other way, right? The curriculum committee can come up with goals and go, that goes to curriculum council, curriculum council. So it's a two-way street, it's not, it's not a one-way avenue. So I would look to guidance for you guys on who would chair that, co-chair it, and then from there I would work with them, same as CIP, building, so forth and so on, to start that.
Mike, do you want comments on the charter that was in the board packet now?
Sure.
I don't know if folks have any.
I can go first.
Go for it.
Okay. I think it's great. I'm super excited about this as well. I don't know if any of our administrators look at the charters for all the other committees we have, but I don't know if it makes sense to put in like a timestamp around reporting on progress, and so if we wanna say that that would happen at least quarterly or something like that.
So I initially put quarterly in and then I deleted it. I'm really, the problem is I don't think we've established our norms yet.
Yep.
So once that is, then we can update that. So this is a draft to get rolling, and then after that, we'll come back. I did, I honestly put quarterly in 'cause that's what we, that was my past practice, but I also can't come to you in October and report on anything. So the goal would be to form it, and then from there, this year is obviously gonna be not quarterly, it might be try, every three months.
Yep.
It might be December, March, June. So that's why I kinda left that out.
Yeah.
But I would, I would lock in a timeline.
Yeah, I think as long as we keep an open mind to it. To raise monitor curricula implementation, I wasn't sure if under the purview of this committee, but also supposed to oversee tests and assignments, and if it's down to that level or if it's sort of the bigger level thing.
Yeah.
I wanna get the right level of oversight as well as.
Yeah, it's macro level. Like we talk about the, the change, so the curriculum council and building level and administration. When you talk about monitoring the implementation, that would be, that, that really connects not the, how are you doing it in the classroom?
Yeah.
That comes back to if we choose a math program.
Yeah.
Right? Envision math, we would, the goal, that committee would report out data saying, here's where we were, and that would be monitoring that.
Yep.
Not the actual micro level, like you mentioned, in the classroom.
Okay. And then I just have two more.
Yeah.
I also don't know if this is necessary, 'cause I think this is probably just table stakes for running a school district, but I don't know if it's also important to tie the charter to the development and evolution of national educational standards or anything like that, and that could literally just be table stakes, that's like implicit to running a school district, but I wasn't sure if we wanted to like tie it to ongoing.
Nope, you're, you're right on, but that comes out of the committee, right? Not here, not the charter, the committee determines, and then that filters down.
Yeah.
But also recommendations filter up. Next-gen science is the perfect example, right?
Yeah.
So that, that, that committee will evaluate eventually and review, do we wanna stick with that, is it required, is it not required, and then that determination's made there. And that would be on the report out here by saying, hey, here's the change, we're shifting from, again, I'm hypothetical, shifting from next gen, but that'd be that, that type of answer to that.
Yep. And then my other one is probably more procedural, this is my last question and all that, but I know we have an open curriculum platform to basically create visibility into the curriculum. I think that's probably too functional for anything in here, and that probably gets more into the reporting piece of it. Plus, I think that's operational and not committee level, but I think it just, I wasn't sure how that all ties together, if there's visibility that way or not. Like, I have no idea if the, the committee has to have anything to do with the way that we visibly present information.
With Rubicon.
Yeah, but that's gonna come out of the committee work as well. Is Rubicon working well? Is it not working well? What are other tools that we use? Where is it posted? Where is it, so that, again, same thing, that's, that is why we need this committee.
Yeah.
Is all those things that have been bubbling up, or so to speak, it's gonna, the work's gonna come out of there.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
What was the functional side of the community that you had in Timberlake?
Yep. So we had two board members. We had the executive director of curriculum, which we don't have here. So superintendent was, I'd say, a half, a half and half one, was there when big things were determined, but if it was ground level work. And then we had representatives from each building administratively, and then we had representatives, we didn't have department heads, they didn't exist. So it was, obviously first it would be soliciting who wants to participate, but the, the key here is separating, we didn't have a curriculum council, we had something else called an advisory committee, separating the, the two. So that, it, obviously we'd probably be going to the council first to say, does anyone wanna bump up, or, you know, that type of stuff, but typically the number was nine, I think it was, I think it was nine.
Thank you.
And that was a larger district too, so we can find our sweet spot whenever we determine.
So my, my question is more on, you encourage the community to participate, like, you know, see this in progress and stuff. Is this gonna be something that's gonna be streamed? Because a lot of people are sure gonna wanna kind of get familiar with what's going on, what's being said.
Yeah, this falls under the same as the building committee.
Yeah, it's a building committee, okay.
Recorded. I don't know if it'll be streamed, I don't know where we'll be meeting, all that, but it'll be recorded, minutes will be taken, posted.
Okay.
All of that's official, it becomes an official committee and all the work is done visible to everybody.
Okay.
I'm just, if, curious if you could just talk through a little bit, Mike, like what kind of, I'm just looking at the charter, and some, it says, some decisions will be approved by the committee and then some decisions will come to the board, and I just wonder if you could just talk a little bit about the different types of decision-making the committee will have and what will still come to the board for approval.
Sure, and it, it's, it's gonna be us finding our way here too, right? So it's gonna be discussions when we're updating and we're finding, well, the board should come to the board, it should not. Bigger things that I discussed earlier would be math program that's gonna cost six hundred thousand dollars. That should come to the board for discussion, right? So the board should discuss, why did we come to this conclusion, how did we get there? But then again, the committee's gonna be presenting that information, it's not gonna be. Lower level things, new course at the high school, middle high school, curriculum committee should be making the final decision on that, not a whole lot of board discussion at that. So when we form this committee, we'll find that, we'll determine that through our mission vision goals of what's gonna come here and what will stay at that level. We'll discuss it here so that everyone knows what's coming, what's not, and then that kinda lays the groundwork.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? And I, and I guess my other, are there any changes or edits that you would wanna see in this document? You know, Rob, you had asked a que, a question about the number of individuals, that was on my mind too. Do we wanna set a number? Do we feel comfortable, you know, allowing, allowing for the, Mike, to sort of get that up and going and then maybe come back and revisit that? I don't know what the right answer is, but.
I would think, you know, workable size, but there may be people that are very passionate that wanna be on this, so a number that says X and that excludes those folks, I don't think that that's necessarily a good idea, but just so long as it doesn't become a, be homed to, to something else and, you know. For me, when I was thinking about just curriculum in general from the other side is, you know, we've been through things like curriculum mapping here, whatever happened between curriculum mapping and Rubicon, et cetera, and I just feel like it's important to understand that curriculum is like, this is the tour we're gonna go on, right? These are the sites we're gonna see, these are the things we're gonna emphasize, and then magic happens when, in the classroom. So I, I just, you know, keeping perspective as to what curriculum is and what curriculum isn't is really important, for me anyway.
Yeah, and, and when we talk about where people's brains go, when you talk about curriculum, they tend to go what you're saying, where this curriculum assessment committee is, is larger, right? We're not gonna be doing curriculum mapping, that's not gonna be happening at that level. The best part about the charter is you see subcommittees can be formed, that, that committee might say, all right, we need a math subcommittee to develop, blah, 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 that's how that's worked, and you, you know, not eliminating everyone, not everyone can be at the, the main meeting, but from there, that's when the subcommittees are determined and, and people can have a, you know, as, you know, part of the pie type of thing, so.
I guess the bottom line is, you know, no shock, I, I like things that are pragmatic. If we're pragmatic, I'm excited. If we're not pragmatic, I'll be a lot less excited.
Question now, really?
It's good to know. So are, are you, are folks comfortable, I guess, with the charter as is? It doesn't have to be, you know, perfect or, or complete, 'cause we can come back and revisit it, but are folks comfortable voting to establish this charter and then, and then we could talk about membership in a second? I see a lot of nodding heads.
Yes.
So if we approve it, can we discuss like how many members we want? It kind of like limit it, that's kinda where, there's one, okay.
Yeah. So is there a motion then to approve the curriculum committee charter as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Or, Norm, number of members, what was on your mind in terms of membership?
Wow.
If nothing, that's cool too.
Well, the first thing, the first thing I thought of is how we can get a piece of everybody, not, not, not a sense of like, like, you know, with the building committee, the first thing that we did, Jim, we got, you know, someone from each level of schools, which is important. We had someone from this specific part, for example, maybe we'd have a teacher from this part of this school that's familiar with it. I also think having a student potentially on there might be a valuable, I don't know if that's happened at Hampstead, where you guys had student representatives on there?
So you're, you're.
I know, you're going back to the boomerang thing again, right?
I know, so I'm saying what you guys should determine is who you wanna represent?
Yep.
And then once, once that, once we work on that, then we establish that level. So you're two steps ahead.
Okay. I'm always that way. Okay. I think the first number that popped in my head, you guys may all disagree with me, was between eight and twelve. That was what, that was the first number I popped in my head.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I think you said nine, right?
Ours.
Yeah, so.
Seven?
Eight, eight, so I think eight would be a good number. Maybe nine, 'cause you need to have a, or seven, because you need to have a majority, you know, vote. So maybe seven?
Well, if we're gonna say there's gonna be two board members.
Yeah.
And then.
Three from each building.
Half the life, and three administrators, we're already five and a half people, ultimately six. So, you know, I think you need to.
We can cut an administrator, that's fine. I'm sure they're happy, and, and, and we work closely enough with, I mean, look at our team, you know, so we work closely enough, so they don't need, we don't need three. I think two's good. So then that opens up the avenue for, you know, a staff member, a lead staff member at each building. And then, students were not a part of our curriculum work, I'll be really honest.
Yeah, that's fine.
They were a part of subcommittee work. When it became to a new course, we tied students into that, or if it became a new, a rewrite or reevaluation of what we're doing, student voice would be brought in, subcommittee work. So that's when we would weave them in.
So maybe eight to ten somewhere in there?
Yeah.
Probably nine.
I'm nine-ish total.
Nine, because that way you have a five-four.
So we're back to nine, what I said, right?
Yeah. Go around.
I would just, yeah, my only flag there was that nine is still a lot for scheduling purposes, so I think I'm totally fine with it also being seven, if that fits the needs of what it needs to be.
On, maybe it'll be like seven and two alternates.
Yeah. Something like that. I just think you wanna, to what you said, you wanna make sure you can actually.
Do the work.
Yeah.
Do the work.
Yep.
So I think what can happen is, this is great input, you know, Mike can work with, which I'll make a recommendation in a second, with the, the school board reps, and then start to pull people in, and then maybe bring back, once you, once you solidified, you know, sort of the group grouping you want, bring it back, and then we can, you know, make sure that still sits well with this team. And in terms of school board, I, I mean, I would, I would nominate two members if they're willing to serve, I would nominate Andrea and Rob, if you guys would be willing to serve on this committee. I think you both have diverse skillsets, that'd be really helpful in, in sort of putting this together and then, you know, managing through the first year of this, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how other board members feel, but that'd be my recommendation. I see nodding of heads.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm ready. I'm excited for this.
Is that something we should?
You thought you were retired, you're not.[1638.25]
I just want to make sure that Chris is still upright over there.
He's smiling, too, I can see it. Is that something we could make a motion on?
I would probably put it on record that they're going to be the co-chairs, and then from there, we'll come back, so.
So is there a motion to appoint Andrea and Rob to the curriculum and assessment committee?
I'll move that.
Nope, you can't second your own. Is there a second? All right. All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Thanks, Mike, for putting that together.
Okay. So on to superintendent goals. As we're establishing the firsts, these are, this might be another one, but since you guys have the goals, I build my goals off of your goals. So what I kind of wanted to say is, mine will fall into the same buckets that you guys solidified. I'll come back to you in a couple of weeks now, the next board meeting with, with a draft of mine. Actually, the, the point of me bringing up tonight is, is if there's anything that you're already hot on, that you'd like me to be, to be a part of, just communicate that through email, right? It doesn't have to be board-level discussion. Right now, you guys will punch, punch and kick it in a couple of weeks, but as I'm developing a, please give them to me ahead of time so that it's not done, and then you're changing the, change, that's all, that's all I'm asking for. So I, I'm looking forward to developing mine, and then administrators develop theirs off mine and buildings. What'll happen moving forward in the, in the next couple of years is, this will be done, you guys will establish school board goals prior to the end of this school year for next year. So they'll be done in June, the June meetings, so that we can start our work in the summer, and we're not, we're not going into October type of stuff.
I got a quick question. Are we going to be posting these online as well, so that the community can see what our goals are?
Yep. So, believe it or not, it's going to be one of our first posts on our new social medias when we start rolling those out. School board goals will come out through Instagram, not TikTok, but.
Not going to maybe dance to them?
No. They could, we could, we could maybe talk to them and do it. But once we start rolling them out, that's going to be one of the ones. And then, we're also redesigning and reorganizing our websites, in which you'll be able to find that information. But we'll post those goals now that they're finalized, under the current school board section, but as we work through. You're going to hear it a lot, we're going to, we're going to come back to these a lot this year. Everything we do will come back to connecting, whether it's with me or with you, so that everyone understands why we're doing what we're doing, so.
So next meeting, we'll, we'll see a draft of your goals?
Yeah.
Perfect. And then in the meantime, if any board member has thoughts on what you should be focusing 100% of your time on, they can share.
Yes.
Perfect.
Please send it my way.
Any other questions from Mike on setting of his goals?
No.
All right, perfect. Safe learning update.
Yeah, so Mr. Stone, you want to make your way down here? All right. Last week, you heard from, two weeks ago, excuse me, three weeks ago, building level administration. Now it's going to be Matt and Special Ed Ms. Hibbert are going to give their updates. It's a long walk from, catwalk.
I'm bringing the audio controls mainly to make sure that I don't feedback on this. Ms. Gaddy did her best, but this is a tough room, so.
Hey, no feedback, that's a good thing.
So I, I'm delighted to give a little update. Obviously, in the technology department, the summer is a key time for us. It's when we do most of our upgrades. This year, we had the excitement of a building project, which also had a lot of complicated factors for us, but good ones. Obviously, wiring up a new section of Harold Martin, so that is fully, almost fully operational. I should say, the last major install was the fiber installation to light that up, and that actually took place this morning, so that's very exciting. And that, that has been operational and will soon be fully operational, I guess, is my parsing of that, which I think is a pretty good overview of the building projects as well. It's largely complete, there's lots of fine tuning still to do, so that's been a great challenge, but that's okay. Certainly, the science rooms are looking in great shape, we're excited to get those soon. And then, we also do lots of network upgrades over the summer, so expanding Wi-Fi throughout our classrooms. We replaced firewalls this summer, so that's building capacity for the future and making full use of our existing internet connection. So, right there. And then, of course, the most visible one is the one-to-one rollout, which just finished last Friday. So obviously, as you heard, we're still working through some of the details on that, but it was certainly great to have those no longer be a pile in 206, which is where they spent all summer, and have them in the hands of students, which is exciting to see. So, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's really still in the initial throes of setting up a school year, a little delayed. One challenge I would highlight is the difficulty of getting technology that I've highlighted before. It is still a significant challenge, technology that we ordered months ago. We ended up switching to different models, because the original order was now, instead of being inspected in three weeks, was six months. So that's fairly common in what we're seeing, and a significant challenge around the board. Projectors that we hoped would be in in six weeks are now looking like four to five months. So we'll get it eventually, but the cost and availability of technology is the least predictable, certainly in my time, so that's an ongoing challenge, and it doesn't look like it will be improved for at least another 12 months. We're, we'll anticipate hopefully some improvement next year, but I don't think during this school year that there will be significant improvement. Other than that, I'm happy to answer.
So typically, I would save questions at the end, but, because he has to walk all the way back up. Probably better if you have anything for him.
I guess my question, just from a check perspective, because I don't know if this is like, who made the rules on the Chromebooks, but from your role, could you explain a little bit about why the decision to have to use a Chromebook and not your personal device?
Sure, and I'd say there's a couple of different levels on that. One actually is providing some consistency for teachers in the classroom, so that they know much respect to cut down on support requests, or, oh, my technology doesn't work. The Chromebooks are relatively simple, they're quite non-functional, they're certainly very quick to replace, you know, you just swap and then helps you out in the back. And then, one of the things is because our monitoring software can be quite intrusive, we wanted to limit that as much as possible. So we don't monitor student devices that are not attached to our domain, we don't monitor students outside of the school building, and that gets very sticky when you're using personal devices in class, if you want to monitor students in class, but not monitor them outside the school. There are some limitations of results, so being able to say, you know, no, when you're home, you're home, and, you know, that's a family decision on how you use technology, that's not a school decision anymore. So pushing that.
So it's, it's somewhat similar to a workplace, where if you're working for an employer, you're going to use your workplace device there and not your personal device.
Certainly alarm bells off, yes, although we certainly understand that there's more BYOD in the workplace than there has ever been before.
And we're also realizing there's far more BYOD in this district than probably anticipated. Speaking more about how we're trying to resolve the student concerns, I know there's a lot of people here, I've been trying to reflect on what, how the plan was developed and how the rollout had happened, and I think inventory messed up a lot of things, and having it ready and on time. So we're actually going to work on a grandfather plan for this year, so to be fair and equitable for the students. But part of that plan is, I think more of the, more of our concern internally is not so much the BYOD as it is support, right? For as much as Matt does a lot, he only has a team of two that manages three facilities, 1,000 devices, so forth and so on. So we're working on that grandfathering plan, and I spoke with Max and Joe this morning on, on what that might look like, that you can continue to BYOD, bring your own device, but there's going to be no tech support, right? Because we can't. We don't, we don't have the capacity to, to tech support someone's personal device, MacBook versus Windows device, so forth and so on. So we're going to, we're going to, we're not just going to cut them off, we're going to roll, we're going to roll it this year as kind of a grandfather program, knowing that moving towards next year, the devices within our walls have to be our devices. And, and to me, what he mentioned, the biggest issue is safety in our building, right? If, if, if people or students are doing things and, and something occurs, I mean, we can go as simple as harassment or inappropriate websites, within, we become liable to what they're using on our network. Now, we have firewall, we have all of that in place, but kids are smart, right? And, and they're able to certainly navigate around all those things. So we're going to work on that plan together, so that the kids don't feel like they're getting something stolen from them, taken away, but also understanding the why we're moving towards it with tech support and safety.
Do you feel like that, that wasn't, that wasn't communicated well, that we were going strict to Chromebook and have these implementations?
I don't want to hang anyone.
No, 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 I don't worry either.
Yeah, I would say that it was, the challenge is, we rolled, the kids were already here, they're already using their devices, and now it's here, no, take this, take that, so it, it's just, it's inventory when they got, when they got set up. So there's a lot of that. But I, sitting here listening to with, with the kids, I, I get it. All of a sudden, you're telling me, no, I just got this, why now? So we're going to work on moving towards that.
And, and one last thing, and I appreciate the district doing that, I just, the parallel, I guess, from going from a senior to college, you know, using a different, you know, going from a Chromebook to going to your own laptop, you know, is there a difference in, you know?
I think honestly, and.
That's, that's my only.
I think everything's so Google-based now, especially university-wise. It doesn't, honestly, it doesn't matter what device. I, it's, it's minimum. I mean, higher classes, engineering, CAD, you're going to find problems with Chromebooks, but we have those devices in those classrooms with that software on it, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they're so, like, user-friendly now, that, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem going from one to another. I mean, granted, you have a different hardware, which makes it easier to use, but that's just.
They might have their personal video games on the computer, too. Okay. So those are some of the things that we're taking away, issuing them a Chrome device, so. Yeah.
I have another question. Unrelated. I know we did a bulk purchase of the Chromebooks last year, so I was wondering what we had for depreciation for all of them, and then if you're sort of tracking the failure rate. So if we wanted to try to like, not necessarily have 700 of them go out in one year, but like, sort of scale that over time?
Yeah, absolutely. We were, I was just speaking with the technology committee about that yesterday, trying to come up with a plan. Right now, we've seen over the course of last year, we saw about 4% attrition in terms of that. When I spoke with many other school districts, they said the fact that there's, in one one point, because, you know, obviously, instead of going home all the time, we expect higher return. So, yeah, we're certainly looking at that after we did start the technology settings to grant, to start working on that. I think we have some decisions to make about, I don't think we'll be operating these devices at the end of the year, the seniors are free, but at some point, typically, you say, okay, after four years, if you want it, do two hours, otherwise we'll recycle it. That device doesn't have a lot of impact.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Or we can back in a whole versus environment, where we did all of it in one year, instead of a gradual rollout. We have some planning to do around that for sure. And then, making sure, we do have, that's not all of our Chromebooks, that's about 60 or 70%, so the other 30% will be, you know, replaced and traveled by the next couple of years, and certainly we're planning for that as part of our budget process.
Okay. So then it's like, we'll be on average roughly like four years per device, if we're lucky?
Yeah, that, that's what we're planning for with a certain early value rate.
Okay.
So, yeah, long-term, we figure around about 1,000 devices.
Yeah.
With spares, about 250 here.
Must be budgeted each year, or, so if we have 250 going out one year, budget, kind of moving forward?
Once we get onto that rotation, I know, because we bought so many in one year, it may be a number of years before we're there.
Okay.
But I think that would be the plan, the sort of plan for those retirements and having the money in the budget, did you say?
Good, okay.
I had a quick question. So I know you were talking about the fact that technology continues to be difficult to obtain, and we had to buy a lot last year. Are we looking at any kind of major purchases this year?
So we're a little bit reevaluating, just because, you know, you do the budget in October, I think the circumstances between last October and, you know, now are not as anyone anticipated, because no one could. So we are adjusting a little bit in terms of, we're buying a few more Chromebooks, we're certainly rolling out some of our teacher, backup devices, projectors in classrooms. And I'm really trying to build what's left of this year's budget and next year's budget as a combined goal to address all those issues, to take a fresh look. One of the things I'm really looking forward to this year is trying to get back to a more long-term plan. We haven't been able to do much of that the last 18, 19 months, to be very honest. And it's typically the like, a lot of more work, you know, we said, okay, I have 70 classroom projectors, they have a, have a six-year lifespan, I need to buy so many for you. Well, we had a whole year where they weren't, you know, about a year where they weren't used on average, you know, and all that, hybrid over time, so they have a somewhat like, longer lifespan, but it's high. So all of that, I think, we're really evaluating, looking at our value rates, and trying to draw that out, redraw, I would say.
Great, thanks.
Rob, you have a question? Nope. Anymore?
Well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Off the haws.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so Ms. Hibbert's not here tonight, she was, she had something come up, so I'm going to kind of do my best to give Special Ed, she'll also come back for sure. One more thing, I know Matt's walking away, keep walking away. We've had a couple of parents reach out to us in regards to outdoor tents and Wi-Fi, not that easy to just simply send a signal out to, to some of those areas, but we're, we're trying to problem solve, whether it's a booster, whether it's an extender, but that's not, it's not, it's, we are not like an airport in which it just broadcasts throughout the whole thing, so we have to find the right spot in order to get out there. So it's, it's just hard to conceptualize that we aren't like a corporation, so we're going to work on definitely extending it out there for the learning spaces, so.
Thank you.
All right. To Ms. Hibbert's update, I'm going to do my best, I, I'm not a fan of reading, she gave a, a pretty good overview, reflection on ESY, which is Extended School Year. We had over roughly 90 students for ESY this year, which is a pretty good number, as well as, if you can imagine after our profession, what, what it was last year going through, we still had 27 staff members that participated this summer. So I think that's a, a great thing for this community, in which people still wanted to continue to support the students. OTPT speech were provided, teachers, IAs, related services, everything continued, school nursing, and it, it's just a compliment to how hard these, these people worked. We were short-staffed, so they were doing multiple things. Ms. Hibbert stepped in on several occasions, it was an IA on days, things of that nature. The other compliment she wanted to send was custodial staff, right? So we had multiple construction projects going on, buildings that were, were in disarray, and they made a priority for the kids. So anything that ESY needed, they not only did that work, they also did the work throughout the year. Another thing she wanted to mention was that Special Ed meetings have begun, and we've been working with those families really closely to, again, it's another adjustment for a lot of these students, right? So when we returned last year, IEPs were rewritten, new goals were developed, all those meetings were held, and now we're revisiting a lot of those, because we're back in, and the goal is to stay in. So she's already started that. And then, a, a new thing for her this year, she's actually working out of a building one day a week or so, so she's able to make it around. It was a goal of hers to be in the building for families and staff members and students, so she's done a great job. It's probably one of the most challenging positions in any district right now, Special Ed Director. She's really trying to, to work with each family that's, that's willing and able to, that, that want to change anything or work with anything, she's been meeting with them, and the teams within the building have done a phenomenal job of working with families, so kudos to her and the Special Ed Department. So that was her update.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, ask for any questions.
Probably can't answer them. We'll wait. She will, she said she'll make it to one of the next ones for sure. Okay. So, moving on, we wanted to discuss enrollment, which is in your packet. Now, keep in mind that that is an enrollment as of today, right, Matt?
Yesterday.
Yeah. So as of yesterday. Now, remember, our official numbers aren't due to the state until October, so those can still fluctuate, but it's been kind of a discussion in regards who's coming, who's going, who's re-enrolled, who hasn't enrolled. So as you can see, that's a pre-K through 12, and coming in at 9:35. I think the thing that stands out to most people would be the freshman class at 99, and then the majority of the classes have all kind of fall, fallen within, I'd say, range. So that was just for you guys, to understand of where we are standing in October.
We haven't had no, no new moments lately.
No, so I, I think this might be leveling off to where we'll be for the year, which brings us back to pretty much where we thought we would be, so. Any questions on enrollment? Nope?
You guys.
All right. The dashboard on the website, I wanted to speak to the dashboard again, just to kind of refocus the area that it's updated Mondays and Wednesdays and Fridays. Now, through a community suggestion, there's now a stamp on there of when it was last updated, so Matt added that immediately. Things that you'll see on there currently, it, it is, excuse me, you, you'll see the active cases with students, any active cases with, with staff, and then remember that those numbers, excuse me, the, the bars of the colors, along with the numbers, is coming from COVID Act Now. You can see that we've, we've kind of spiked, we're, we're up, we're up to areas of, of, excuse me, the very high. Remember, these are all just data points we use, but I always am going to continue to bring it back to our, our actual numbers, which is the, the gray square with, with what's going on. So really, it's just redirecting everyone to that dashboard again, understanding that that is live, and then you'll be able to see when we update and when we don't update. All right?
So, Mike, have a question?
Yeah, please.[1713.32]
So when the dashboard is updated, users updated and it might be, it goes up, at that same time, is there usually kind of an email kind of sent out?
Nope.
Nothing at all?
No, so this is just an area, this is internal data. So it's on our website that any parent can reach at any time. So if, if that's their trend, that the parents went to log on and check it out, we're not sending out, we're not sending out, hey, we updated the dashboard.
No, 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 but like, if there's, if there's a case that's positive, then they're like some type of...
Sure. Okay, yeah, so for that, yeah. So when cases are, are happening now within the, in the school, you'll get a communication from the building principal.
Yep.
You'll get a communication of whether it was school, bus, and then also through contact tracing. With close contact, you'll get a, a, a separate notification whether that student was close contact. So essentially two levels of communication if that's how it falls. Yeah. Nothing directed to the dashboard, more to the cases.
Okay. I was just trying to correlate it together, like if I see, again, email, as a parent, I'm gonna go and potentially look and see, okay, how many cases are we currently at? You know, is it increased since I've gotten the email, just kind of putting two and two together? Okay, that's what I wanted.
The, the nurses, obviously they track daily. And, but also depends on their schedule on when they, they update the data and then Matt updates the dashboard. So there's a process in regards to that. Communication as we're notified by families and the nurses and we do all our steps, that's when our communication comes out from the building.
Perfect.
Any other dashboards? Nope? Okay. Uh, temperature, we spoke about that three weeks ago, believe it or not. And in your package, you'll see the last two weeks of spot checks for temperatures for the building. And the facilities team has done a great job, ten random spots a, a day in each facility. You can see, you know, you can see the trend, right? You can see where it's warm. I would say the, the promising piece is we've had fairly good weather, we're gonna have a warm day tomorrow, things like that. But it's been, it's been cooperating, high, high numbers seem to be around seventy-seven, seventy-eight, which is all right, it's not great. But it's also not ninety. So we're working on that. At Harold Martin, we purchased twelve, are you allowed to buy? Okay. Twelve dehumidifiers, I want to be clear, not humidifiers. And we're gonna be placing them in the higher sticky areas to begin trying to bring the humidity level down. I know I caught Rob before the meeting, but for the board, that, that, the study for the middle, high, four, five floors is about to be wrapped up, so I should have that to you by next meeting. Information on what they feel is appropriate moves. So that is the update on temperatures.
Okay, so about twelve for Harold Martin, is that right?
Twelve.
And then is there a planned expenditure, and I might have just fully blanked out while we were talking, for Maples, and so it looks like they actually turned to higher temps?
We, we can. We targeted that building because of the older, Bill, you know the years, I don't know the years. Yeah, so we're evaluating those as we go through, certainly, and, and the spot temps are gonna help us. Amy, any, any areas that you think that we should target immediately? Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape there. Also the amount of kids and the bodies and all that, so, but the good thing is they're doing it again this week, it's not gonna go away, we're continuing the work. Okay. Um, moving on, I just wanted to, you know, we've talked several times about masks and it was always a discussion. I, I just want to compliment the staff and the students, we've had ninety-nine percent cooperation with masks. It hasn't become an issue like a lot of people anticipated. So that just goes to the, the student body, as Juliette had mentioned, that we want to be in school one hundred and eighty days. So I just appreciate it, I, I know a lot of the, the community appreciates it, so just wanted to acknowledge that. Also want to bring back self-screening and reiterate the importance of self-screening and how that is a mitigation strategy we need to continue. At the superintendent's meeting on Friday, it seems like a lot of the issues that are popping up within schools tend to come from self-screening or the lack thereof. So it's important that if you're, have a symptom or feeling, to keep your student home and communicate with our, our, our nursing. And, and our nurses have been helping those families, whether it be testing or whether it not be. But communicating with them, come up with a plan, it, it's certainly, it's certainly been going well. Which leads into the next discussion that, that a lot of people are having, we had it at the superintendent's meeting, but also more specifically within the district. And it's a program called S A S S, right? Safe, S, what is it?
I was just saying S A.
Yeah, so it, it, it's essentially a screening, excuse me, tool, so to speak. And it's funded, grant-funded, all these things. And believe it or not, Chairman O'Neill set me up in Ju-
Brian.
Brian.
I can be O'Neill, too, it's all right.
It's a good Irish name. Set me up in July, we started this in July. And the nurses registered immediately, so we're a part of the program. There's a misconception out there of, of you're either all in or you're all out, and that's not true. So we're a part of it. So there's two types, you can do pool testing, right? So pool testing, the easiest example, I've been explaining it to people, is on Monday, a vendor would come in, swab students, put it in unidentif- unident- excuse me, unidentifiable. They would send it out, we would get results typically thirty-six to forty-eight hours later, so that would be Wednesday. And that would be opting in, right? A lot of districts are not doing that as of right now. The more powerful thing that students or, uh, districts are doing are the personal testing. So when we join this program, we can personally test onsite. And, and I talked about that a couple of weeks ago, and we've been doing it already. So if a student comes to nurse with symptoms, you know, so forth and so on, nurse calls home, hey, would you like us to test? Yes, they're testing onsite, getting immediate information. So, and, and, and we meet with the nurses every Tuesday, and, and meeting with them, we're still trying to find that lane on the value of pool testing. Because if you don't have a greater number, the significance of pool testing becomes insignificant. So if we have twenty kids in a class and only three have opted in, the, the data isn't really truly valuable to us. If we are able to get that number, they're, the number we've discussed about is almost upwards of eighty or eighty-five percent participation, then it becomes far more valuable data to us. Still forty-eight hours later, which is another discussion, but we're trying to find that lane, and a lot of districts are, because from the meeting, there's not a lot of opting in. It's, that's just the reality, there's, there's a lot of people that don't feel comfortable with the vendors or the results or, or things of that nature. So we want to make sure we find that area. We, we're starting to see a trend, probably more at the lower elementary school. So again, the data's starting to show itself on where these avenues might happen. And the nursing team is, in, in, in ushering, are in tight discussion on, on when that might work. And that's kind of where we stand on that. So the, the personal testing, I think we've tested... We probably test three or four a day right now. We've actually delivered some to homes and, and with, with, with things that are going on. So we're not not acting, we're just trying to find the right time. So that would be the update on pool, yeah?
And so the funds for those are all covered by a grant program?
Yeah, and, and, and they, the, well, it's funny, they're tied to certain vendors, right? So you can only select, select from a certain one. We partnered with U N H for the personal testing.
Yeah.
And we can reorder more than we need. So the nurses are really appreciative of that lens, it's helped them in that office significantly.
Yeah.
It's helped families too, right? How hard is it to book, get a P D appointment or whatever it may be, we've been able to support them.
Right.
They have criteria, right? We don't want to become a testing station, right? So we don't want to not self-screen, oh, you have a runny nose, go to school, just go to the nurse's office, that's not happening. They're, they have to meet crit- criteria in order to be tested.
Right. And do we have any data, get self-reported data on vaccinations, which I know is a separate issue, so we didn't want to talk about it, but...
Yeah, we're still in the process. Again, that, we're ten days into school. We're still working through the, the nursing team, we're gonna be sending home another communication from them and you're, we're, we're trying to time it appropriately, so it's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's on my tongue, so before I forget it.
I wrote mine down.
So I have a quick question. So on, on the pool testing, just, just so I make sure I understand this clearly. Parents would have to opt in.
Yep.
Plain and simple. Two, it's free, it's part of the grant process, right? So there's no, there's no cost to this district whatsoever. My, my concern is, is that it hasn't been offered, so we wouldn't know how many would be part of it, Mike. And that's where I struggle a little bit, you know, they keep saying maybe five or ten students, but you don't know that information.
Yeah, it also becomes disruptive to our schools because it's outside vendors coming in, taking away from our class time. So when you talk about the amount of people, our, our, our data still shows that we aren't at a cluster, we haven't had multiples, we haven't had school transmission. All of that pure data is showing here. So when, when we talk about we don't know how many would opt in, we can work on, on determining that. I just wanted, when I brought it up, I wanted to reassure that we're not not part of the program. We are self-testing, we are individualized testing, and we're trying to find the right opportunity to weave it into, again. If they're showing up Monday morning, that's gonna take away from it, whether it's first period, it's gonna take away from whatever it may be to go through however many kids. It becomes a, a, another person that we have to deal with within, and we're here to go to school. So in regards to, again, I, I said it repeatedly to the nurses and who are, I'm not, we're not saying no, we're just trying to find the right spot for it to happen.
And I'm not arguing or anything, I'm just saying, it's gonna be disruptive if, if a kid gets COVID and they're out of school and it, someone else gets, we can't, we have an opportunity to stop it or...
We can't stop it.
Not stop, I'm not saying stop it, but be able to find this data of maybe having, we found in the cluster or something like that, it's just an opportunity for us to collect data. Also, when vaccinations rates go up, it gives us another, more data, like, okay, when is that that point where we can go maskless? When vaccination comes out, there's that, in that data of pool tests and saying, okay, you know what, things seem to be a lot clearer, the transmission's low within the school district. We have information in, to make better decisions.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not-
It's an opportunity in my opinion.
I'm not arguing with you either, but it's also, at thirty-six to forty-eight hour turnaround, the student's gonna be in school Monday, Tuesday, and then maybe Wednesday anyways. Our internal practices are saying, go to the nurse's office, get assessed, test there, that's, that's all happening on a Monday. That's not, we're not relying on a pool test to show us something later. So our internal practices are actually more efficient than pool testing. Pool testing is, again, depending on the number, i- if you're upwards of the eighty, eighty-five percent, sure, but that's still another two and a half days of school. So again, I'm not here to argue.
No.
We've talked about if we do, if we take masks, if we go to modified mask, right? If we go to modified mask at the middle, high school, does pool testing become part of that, right? That seems like a good lane to, to, to add it into, and there would, there'd be a lot more opt-ins, so to speak. So I'm not saying no, I'm saying we have to find the appropriate time because it, outside vendors, remember, they don't, they're there for their job and we're here for the kids and to teach. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying what we're doing now is working, that's a fact. And what our nurses are doing right now is a fact, it's working.
And I'm just playing a side of, on the side saying, yeah, and we're not fighting. We're, I'm just, if, I, I feel that if the community wants to opt in and they have, and they have that opportunity to, and this, we have the resources to do it, it's, it's worth having a compensation. And I've heard other districts have done it. And I mean, I understand, parents want their children to come to learn, I don't want them to lose faith over this, but they also would prefer their child be in-person than be remote and be sexy. So it's just two things to kind of think about.
Yeah, and I've, I've, and, and, please bear with me. When we talk about other districts, I've said that I will not, I always work about Hockington, I don't worry about, because what other districts are doing... At the meeting I was with, all, all the superintendents, some of them were saying, it's actually caused more problems than solved anything. It's caused more because of, we're letting some other people play the game first before we enter. And we're seeing some of the roadblocks they're running into, things of that nature. So again, I'm not saying no, I'm saying we have to find the right times, the right vendor, who's gonna be, who's gonna work on our schedule, not their schedule. Some of them haven't been coming in until Wednesdays and you're getting results on Fridays. So all of those things are coming into action right now. But we are part of the program and we are self-testing immediately with anyone that we need to.
Rob?
I guess my question was a little bit redundant to norms was, you know, have we broadcast that out to parents? And then listening to the conversation, I, I think it might have some value to find out now who would want to opt in, gather that data. So that if we did want to do this, we're ready to hit the ball, you know, hit the ground running. Doesn't mean you have to do it, but it would be probably wise to find out which parents and what percentage of families would want to opt into the program. If it does mean, you know, we talked about when do we move these goalposts. We're gonna have more information in terms of our positivity rates that may be getting missed, that, because we're not, we don't have that pool of data. So I, I guess my, you know, in the short, I would, I would feel very comfortable asking parents if they would opt in if this was gonna be a... Juliette has her hand up.
Nope. Thank you, Juliette. Thanks, Rob.
So it's, I guess broadcast, it has not been broadcast, that's correct. But any student that comes with symptoms, just like if you needed Tylenol or whatever it may be, it becomes part of the nurse's diagnostic on the patient.
Okay. And then also the pool testing and, you know, the pool testing and the self-testing, that being either or thing, and then we stop that?
So that's that, the real goal of pool testing is for asymptomatic carriers, right? So it's not showing a symptom, not showing whatever it may be. So it's not in either or other, meaning if you have a symptom, it'd be the nurse. Pool would be, if you opt in, it would be depending on the vendor, what day and time they would come.
Any other questions, Juliette?
Would you be getting back individualized results of answers, so is it just like...
So it is anonymous, so it's tied to a barcode, so with older students, it'd be easier to, essentially if you have the app, you could barcode yourself. So you would get the results, but the school also gets a result, meaning not if it's negative, but if it's positive.
I guess my, one thing I would say is, if, if we're gonna put out, you know, any kind of question to, to families about whether or not they would opt into pool testing, I would want there to be more information than would you opt into pool testing. You know, I just, I would want it really to, like, what does that look like for my child at every school? What is the time involved? What are these tests? Are they the ones that are going, you know, super high, are they low? I just, I guess I'm speaking more as a parent now. I would want more information to really understand the program.
Sure. In the vendor that we spoke about this summer, they certainly have that stuff available. So it would be a packet, if, if we go that way, it could be a packet of information and then along with whether or not you'd be interested in it, so.
I also, I mean, I guess on the same note, I also wonder if, you know, right now, you're looking at the dashboard, the number is really low. If, God forbid, there were some kind of surge that happened in the school, I wonder if folks who initially did not feel that they wanted to participate in pool testing, I wonder if it would change. So I don't, I guess I wonder if while the transmission and risks appear low based on the information we have now, if we're gonna end up with a lower percentage of people opting in versus if we were to switch to pool testing, if we were to see any kind of surge, if that would be different? It's more of a, less of a question, more of a comment.
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, that's why the meetings with the nurses are so important, you know, they have a pulse of what's going on and they're the ones reporting out on the data daily. If they told me we needed to, to do this immediately, obviously we would have been acting on it immediately. But again, the practices that we have in place have created a safe learning environment to, to not feel as though we need to be jumping at, 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 moving down that road, right? We're still, like I said, it's talked about every week, we talked about it again today. So I can certainly work towards trying to put that information together and see where, see where we come.
Yeah, and for my part, I'm pretty comfortable with, I think, the plan that you have in place with the nurses. And so I, I brought it to you, so I'm definitely not opposed to pool testing. It makes sense, but I, I'm not sure, without the details, I think that Andrea had asked for, like, how we would do a survey where parents could give informed opinions? Because I think we'd have to know vendor, what's gonna happen, so I, I don't think it's a problem to work on that, but I'd, I'd hate to jump out with the survey before we get all that put together.
I'm not sending it out until you guys review it. Yeah?
And then I could see it, I mean, I think we talked about it back in July, I mean, I, I could see this being very helpful for like our sports teams as one, as one example where they're, you know, they're out and about, they're out with other schools. Doing weekly testing of athletes makes a lot of sense, I could see that making sense. I think it gets harder when you, when you put it into the entire school population at this point, but that, that's just me. So I, I don't mind preparing for it, but maybe not.
We can do a, can do a session just for that. One, you know, if, if it needs to be.
Session on, no, I'm sorry.
Session just on explaining what pool testing is, for people to ask questions that they need to, we've done it with other topics.
I think we'd want to find a vendor and move down that, but I, I agree, if we wanted to go in that direction, we definitely could.
Just make it a one thing and so people can ask their questions, make it easier, but, you know, the cases are going up in, up in Merrimack County, so I mean, it's, the data's...
But our internal, I want, I, I don't, I don't want to do that because internally, we're doing okay, and it's important to me. Because ever, all the safety things we're putting in place are doing, we're doing the right stuff here. So Merrimack County might be going up, I, I get all that, and I, I will continue to focus on us in this building. And I, and I don't mean that as anything other than that's what's important to me, so, sorry.
Right, yeah, and I think my last, my only thought that I have is I don't think it's ever bad to inform the public either, just to know like what might be coming in the pipeline, two weeks, four weeks, eight weeks, whatever it might be. The SCIM, the, no, we've done.
Scoop.
SCIM and the Hock News are also like a nice, you know, like even just a link to their website or something, so people can like learn about it ahead of even having a survey. Having like a formal board conversation, I don't think it's a bad thing to sort of let people know the resource, resources that are available, sort of to Juliette's point.
I, I am with you, I want to know more, you know, as a parent and as a board member. I, I am with you, I wanna know more, you know, as a parent and as a board member, you know, how this, how this goes throughout the week and, you know, how it affects our students in the curriculum, but I think it's worth a discussion and us know more about it before we implement it and get feedback on it, so.
Mike, I had a quick question for you, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you're totally.
Okay. Um, in your conversations with the nurses, just to make sure I'm not missing anything, have they at any point this year said that pool testing would be helpful to them? Have they felt that pool testing is something that they would like to see the school implement? Is this something that has been brought to your attention? You know, I know that as a Board of Community members, we'll have our own ideas.
Sure.
But within the school and, and within your nursing at all three levels, is this something that's been brought up to you?
It's, so it started in the summer, literally, and we, we talked initially, we talked about actually maybe doing it with fall sports, and then we talked to NHI, AIA, and they were not instituting any pool testing for other communities. Again, you start going into some of those discussions. From there, what was most important was A, signing up for the program, getting the tests so that we could have them on property and in, in the nursing offices, that was the most important part now. Now that we've got it rolling and we've seen how we're using it for individual students, that next level, we talked about winter sports, right? So how are we gonna do that? And, and, and we've talked about community transmission and if our numbers, so, yeah, again, I say it, it hasn't been a no, it's just not tomorrow, right? We're trying to evaluate, again, the information you asked about each vendor does it different. You know, who are the trained professionals coming in that are gonna be swabbing our students' noses? Where's the data going? All that stuff is important to me because they're our students, so.
Okay.
So I'll work on putting a pack of information together for you guys to review and we'll take next steps at the next Safe Learning update. Does that work?
I think so, yeah. C nods.
Okay. All right. Survey for ESER, I just wanted to communicate to the board, part of ESER requirements are public and community feedback, and we've been doing that through public hearings.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be a survey, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more of an informational, we're gonna put it out there on the website, that teachers, stakeholders, teachers, community members, all those people can participate. There's gonna be, I see Matt, scale of one to ten, right? One to ten on the categories, does that sound right, familiar? Yeah. Whether it's technology, whether, you know, it's, it's so forth and so on. So, that's gonna be coming out soon, I just wanted to communicate it at this level. We'll take that information the same as we do with public hearing, we've had a lot, at the public hearing previously, there was a lot of talk about reading programs, non-programmes, all that stuff as we're working towards ESER and seeing how we're gonna use that funding, so. So that's update on ESER. Any other questions on Safe Learning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hello, all right. Okay, so, this is a great and very helpful update. Three weeks ago at our last meeting, one of the things that we talked about was had to have the board vote or not vote on the Safe Learning Plan. Where I kinda shook out was that we wanted to make sure we gave you the ability to be flexible in case there was massive swings or changes and we need to sort of reevaluate day to day. That said, it's been nice to see, they've been, I think, pretty consistent in terms of where we are and been getting feedback, and I think that that's been a great process. I do wanna revisit the conversation about voting as a, as a board to pass the Safe Learning Plan as presented three weeks ago, because I think it's a great plan, I'm in favor of it. I think it's important to make sure that the community knows that you and every single person working in this district has whatever the outcome of the board vote might be. And I also think it's important to set sort of a good precedent for us on these huge policy procedural things to also put together a, a good process and relationship between the board and the community. That's sort of, I, I wanna revisit that piece of the conversation. I don't know if anyone else has any other major thoughts.
I'll, I'll jump in. So, you know, we have talked about, as Dulce said, if we vote on it, then we're locked and you, you lose flexibility theoretically speaking, right? But then for clarity's sake, and I don't know the reporter's name, and, you know, there was some misunderstanding that came out in the New Hampshire Bulletin that said Hockington has given superintendent full reign to make, and I don't think that's what we decided. So, you know, just, again, for clarity position, it might be in our best interest to say, okay, this was a board decision in terms of how we're moving forward, you know, sort of good stepping back from what I thought in our last meeting, however many weeks ago that was. If there's a change, it's gonna be a change that's gonna take place maybe two weeks forward, maybe ten days, maybe seven days, we're not talking about a lot of time here. So, when I saw that article and I was like, wow, I don't know how he came up with that, no offense, you know, to whoever that person was, but I think it should be clear that there is board support for this.
So I was in the restroom, so are we talking about that school plan that we approved, that we discussed?
Vote to approve it, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Is someone on, make a motion?
I'll make.
Well, do, do we need to discuss it anymore?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, I, I, I definitely hear what you're saying. As, as I see it right now, the board mandated or asked, Mike, sorry.
There's a real deal over here.
To implement a return to school plan with universal masking that has occurred. So I guess for me, I, I'm willing to have more of a discussion on it, I think it would need to then kind of be a bigger discussion, and personally, I, I sort of feel like at this point, we have a plan in place, we are moving forward, and I would like to keep moving forward. So I guess, I, I guess I'm wondering, what problem are we trying to solve by having a vote that isn't happening currently?
So, for me, the problem is somewhere in the universe, somebody doesn't understand the clarity of that and thinks that the board said, Mike Flynn, to pretend they're schools, you decide what our Safe Learning Plan will be, and we're gonna leave it to you to make those decisions. I, I personally don't think that's what we said, so I think for clarity, we should take a vote on it and just to make it clear that this is the direction, the superintendent has been directed by the board for the Safe Learning Plan that he put forward, and we approved that.
And that there is buy-in or whatever the way that the vote goes from the elected members of the community to actually administer and implement that policy, and that we are all bought into it, or wherever we are, yeah.
So the elected officials are on the record as how, what we believe is the policy of the Hockington School District. I, I mean, that makes sense. I mean, when there is a motion, there is a discussion, and I think that is the discussion where, I've been in many motions where the discussion has taken a long time, and that is time to talk about how you feel about the motion that's being said, and I think it's a roll call, I mean, it's, it's the vote, and I think that's something where we need to have.
So is there a motion?
You want, Mike, you want me to make, I don't know how to make it, I'm trying to be, how do I clarify this? The motion would be that the board affirms the Safe Learning Plan that is currently in place, as discussed at the meeting of the.
August tenth, August fourteenth, I mean, August fourth, tenth, and twenty-fourth.
There you go. Is that, is that a fair motion?
That's perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and then we can clarify, if there's any questions on what your motion was, anybody can ask, but I, I'm pretty sure I'm pretty clear what your motion is, so, appreciate it. So, any discussion?
This is the time to have the discussion.
Yes, no. So I'll start, I mean, I'll discuss, so I'm gonna vote no, and I, and, and I think I've been pretty clear, it's not because I'm, I don't like masks, and it's not, but I, I do think what's been presented in the universal masking is pretty black and white, and I think, I, I believe we operate in shades of gray across our, our life and across the district, and I, I see the point of masking and I, I don't dismiss it, and I think that there are, there's flexibility that I wish we would have within our universal masking, in which we, we could have some cases where, especially in cases like in a middle high school, where we know students are vaccinated, you know, or teachers are vaccinated, that we could do something, maybe, since we don't have a lot of cases or any cases in the school, where we could have, you know, maybe masking along hallways and in, in common spaces, but maybe when students are at their seats, they can remove their masks. I would be comfortable with that, I know that I'm probably in the minority of the board, and that's fine. But I, I just wish we could have more shades of gray within the universal masking rather than just black and white, and we still haven't got, was hoping to get to the discussion about, well, when do we wean off masks? What are those criteria? And we haven't even set that yet, so it feels like we are gonna set universal masking guidelines without an understanding or how those are gonna come off, and I know we can have that discussion, but I'm uncomfortable sort of of the mandate now, especially when the cases are low. So it's not that I'm opposed to masking, it's not that, but in terms of like what's been presented in the universal, universalness, that's not a word. I just, I struggle with, and I, and I would rather see a little bit more flexibility within the administration, within our nursing staff, to be able to look at the data in the schools and be able to adjust, do the adaptive management that we did last year in the case of this year, especially when we can track daily how many cases we have in the district and what our risk level is.
Yeah, do you wanna know?
Sure. I, I see where you're coming from, Jim. I just think the other thing that's important that we, we bring out is our risk management firm, Primex, last year when we started this process, they had a very long webinar about what schools should do and shouldn't do and how guidance should go. And I asked earlier in the year for an update from them, and in that letter, it was pretty clear that you should follow the guidance as directed from the noted DHHS and the noted CDC, and then there was et cetera in there, but essentially, as a risk management perspective, that we follow the guidance that is the norm by major organizations. So I think we have a responsibility as a board to do that, and right now, that guidance is saying universal masking is the preferred choice, so I do think that we put the school district in a bit of jeopardy if we step outside of that. So that's one of the legs of the school for me to think about.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'm, I think that the piece for me is that it, it can change in the same way that we passed a policy committee that says it can be dissolved by a vote of the school board, we can do the same thing with masking if and when conditions change, and I'm very happy to help work on that and determine what sort of forward-looking guidance may or may not be. But I just think it's important to be able to say, this is where we are, this is what we're working on, and keep the conversation going in a way that I think is really beneficial.
Yeah, and, you know, and if the guidance changes from, in a, in a major way, from, from those two organizations that they note specifically, then we reopen the conversation. But I, I just find, if, for lack of a better word, a layman, I prefer not to be doing that, you know, homework myself to say this or that, so that's, yeah.
Do you wanna go?
You can go first, I'll go last, I'm not on that.
Um, you know, I, I have a lot of feelings about this. While I'm glad that we're having this conversation today, I wish we had had it in August. You know, I'm just personally frustrated that we're coming, coming back to this over and over again, because I really wanted to have this discussion a month, over a month ago, but I'm glad we're having it, I guess, today.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna understand what the discussion is, that you're talking about, the discussion to vote or not vote, or the discussion over the plan?
The discussion over the plan, that we, I, I didn't feel that it was as full a discussion as, as possibly we've had in the past over some issues, which is, is fine, and I was happy to support the majority of the board moving forward. I think if I were to specifically look at the universal masking that we have in place and say yes or no, you know, kind of solidify that, and even if we didn't, as I spoke about this when we, when we talked last, I, I am also uncomfortable with the, the black and white nature of it. You know, I know things that were brought up were if we reach eighty-five percent vaccination rate, we know we have over that with our teachers, but we are mandating that they wear masks, which is, you know, again, it's the will of the board. I know that you spoke about, like, the CDC right now does recommend universal masking, DHHS on the other hand, says that it needs to be more local, you know, looked at more locally. So even within the organizations that we're looking at, they oftentimes say that you need to look at your unique and specific situation. So, I, I, I guess that's, that's where I fall. I, I too had wanted, I guess, when I, when I talk about wanting to discuss the plan, I wish that we could've had a, a bit more of a conversation over, and perhaps this falls into more of a conversation of what does removing masks look like? What, what comfort level is that? When will people get to that? You know, I, I just feel like those are all other points that, that we haven't discussed and that I would feel that I would need to know more about in order to a hundred percent support the plan. Yeah, I, I, I wish that there was more flexibility. So I think while I appreciate the, the current plan, like completely support people following the will of the board, I think as a board member, I would, I would vote no at this point, simply because I would want the flexibility, I would want, you know, my mind, again, it goes really to our teachers, and, and us mandate, excuse me, mandating our teachers right now to wear masks when we know that they have, when we know they have a high vaccination rate, when we know that we have, you know, low spread within our actual schools. So, I guess that's, I guess that's where I come down to, and then again, I look at, you know, CDC is national, DHHS is a little more local, you know, so it's, it's also which, which organization are we choosing? None of them are regulatory agencies, you know, it, I, I guess, I guess it's, it's more nuanced than I feel our current plan is.
Well, I just.
Yeah.
So, in terms of they're not regulatory agencies, okay? They are identified agencies in that Primex level. So, you know, again, part of our job is protecting the school district from risk, so I, I think that that has some credibility there. You know, I'm trying to think about the position of mandating that teachers wear masks, and I'm gonna go back, and I'm just gonna think, if, if I was back in the classroom right now and I were saying to these folks, you need to wear a mask, but because I'm vaccinated and adult, I don't have to, I wouldn't do that. I would wear a mask. You know, it's that old creed, you know, do what I say, not as I do? I just would have a really hard time with that scenario. If I'm gonna expect my students to do something, then I would do the same thing. So, and, and I know there's probably, you know, differences of opinion out there amongst the faculty, but speaking for myself and just thinking as how teachers go about their day, you like to set an example for your students by doing things in a certain manner that you would like for them to follow. So, I think, I don't know, that, that's, I, I'm gonna, I support what we did and why we did it, and I'm more than willing to rethink that as we get more guidance from those organizations.
I guess I would just ask, like, which organization? So which do you have, and not to pin you down, but is there a specific organization that you, you feel you really would like us as a board to focus on? Do we, do you want us as like a board to focus on the CDC that is different than, you know, than what we would focus on if we were looking at NHDHHS? So I, I guess I'm, I'm looking to you three, like, is there, is there an organization that, that you would prefer that we, not meaning to cut you out of this, you know, that we look at?
And I think that's fair, and actually, just because I wanna, I don't wanna preempt the answer, but I, I think part of what we talked about a couple of weeks ago was coming up with, and I have some here from you guys sent me, like, what are those criteria that we're gonna use in terms of, of guidance on masks? And so, I, I think, I don't wanna interrupt the question and answer, but what I was hoping to do is go, when we're done this conversation, go back to some of the response I got from, from you guys about what those criteria would be, and then see how we sort of set up, and part of it is guidance from certain agencies, and so I think.
Never mind.
That might be part of, that might be part of the next conversation, so, anyway. I don't wanna, but I don't wanna interrupt, but I just did. Anyway, I don't want, but I don't want to interrupt, but I just did.
So I love being last. Now, um, I think it's, you know, I hear everyone saying, I hear what you guys are saying. I understand everyone's opinion on this. Give me a second to wrap my head around that. So where, where I'm looking at is, I think a board vote does solidify, in my opinion, where we as a board that's elected sense how we feel about something that we are implementing. And I do believe that's really important because we are elected from the community. We all have our own people that support us or don't support us, which is fine. And it is how we feel on things. And I think it's important that we do put this on the record as a board vote. I do believe it's definitely important of discussion when the masks, masks do come off. I think it's necessary, but because I, you know, heard from public comment saying this could continue to keep going and going and going, I do think it happens in parameters in place of what we're looking for, benchmarks, benchmarks, I think is, is appropriate. I think, you know, we owe it to the community. You know, but I, I keep hearing we focus on how it continues, and I respect that. I do. I absolutely do. But I can tell you, it's, it's, it's increased more, you know? And I've seen it, and it's, it's definitely continues to increase. And I think it's important that we continue with the plan that we've, we had and do support, you know, the board like I did that day. I, I just, I can't, I can't fathom putting at risk right now our students, they're having success at being in person right now. They're in school. Mike has said 180 days is our goal. And to follow the guidance right now that's out there, I think is, is the appropriate way. One thing that I do want this board to look at is the mental health part. We had a resident here have volunteered someone from this community to work with the students who are struggling. So I really would like to have that done. They volunteered their time free, no charge whatsoever. Mike, has that been?
So I'm going to, I'm going to, again, redirect us to our, our, our employees have only been in school for 10 days. So we're trying to wrap around our own practices. We haven't been back in our building. Last year was dysfunctional all year. The year before that, we got sent out. So that person that, that communicated that is certainly on the list, but we're still trying to do our internal practices first before we're bringing external people into our problems. Because they're a problem solver, right? And they're, they, they help solve our problems. But we need our own staff to identify, evaluate, and make sure that we're recommending the right students to the next level, which would be an outside person.
So we don't reach out as outside person until you've done?
We have to do our jobs first.
Okay. So when do you think you'd need the contact outside help on, on evaluation if there needs to be something? Is there?
I've only, again, we've only, this is day 10.
10 days, I know, I know.
So, so we're still evaluating our own kids on where they stand post-pandemic essentially and where the supports are needed for them. And we, we pay people professionally to do that as well. It's not that we're not saying no to any solicitation from help, but we have to make sure we're targeting the right people, right students, excuse me. So I can't give you a timeline on that. We might only have one student. We might have 25 of them. We're, we're still, we're only through two days of road, you know, five classes on one day at Middle High, five day on another. So for them to actually see our own student services and our own identified, and IEP meetings are all, all that's, it's still a whirlwind in our building right now.
Norm, are you done?
I'm just trying, just trying to think about why you guys have voted no. I'm just trying to, I understand, Jim, I'm still wrapping my head around your comments. Okay.
I mean, Norm, I think you brought up a good point that, I mean, this is why I think some flexibility, in my view, would be important because I do think, I think there's, there's a lot of different students. We have 1,000 different students in our buildings. And so some students may have anxiety, they may have, there's all sorts of, I don't want to get into all the reasons, mental health issues, there's all sorts of reasons where there are shades of gray in how we accommodate those students. And right now, I think with the universal masking, a lot of the, many of those accommodations may be harder to implement because of the universal nature of a mask mandate.
But if it's being implemented anyways, then what's the difference between whether or not the community knows that as a board, we do or do not support it? But it's being implemented, if the policy is being implemented, it's unclear to me why.
Well, if the policy, I'm sorry. Because if the policy is universal mask mandate, and we may have some students who, whatever reason, you know, I don't want to get into, may, may struggle with that, it's still a universal mask mandate, so those students are going to continue to struggle. Because right now in the plan, there's not a.
No, it says in the plan, in the Safe Learning Plan, accommodations could be made. It literally says that on one of the pages.
Yeah, through medical documentation or an IEP process.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm saying that, that may not speak to all the levels of, of accommodations some students may desire. And I'm not, I'm not pointing out specific examples. I'm just, I'm saying with some, with some additional flexibility, with some shades of gray, you might be able to accommodate more students. So.
Do you want me to clarify anything?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good.
I got you. No, I got you.
So you're, you're, you're saying it was the teachers having flexibility, the students are in the high school, right? That's, that's where you're talking about regarding being masked specifically went to optional, correct?
I mean, I think for me right now, that's the thing that jumps out immediately.
Yeah.
As far as the, the most obvious flexibility piece that hits on what I heard from, from you guys. So I heard, you know, vaccination rates and I heard organizations that we're looking at. And so that's why, you know, I think DHHS, I think 95-plus percent vaccination rates. And I, I, you know.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine being. No, no, I'm totally fine being on the spot. I just, I think that it, I feel that it perhaps should be more nuanced than a universal mandate is.
Yes, Julia?
I just feel like, well, so I'm starting saying that I know focusing on how it can be important, and I know that we have very low cases, and I think that we do have some, which is more than a summer. They might be offline, like last, which actually we did have some, and we had in previous months. And even though in our schools, we might not have any of all that, because sports, even winter sports, we're going to have people traveling, we're going to have people potentially bringing it back. And I think it's important to look at the trends and that it might get worse. And I know last year, you know, our curriculum, it was going to change a lot, but we started off in person and then we went online. And I think that the effects online school had were so much more detrimental to everyone's mental health than wearing masks would be. I just really wanted to have as normal as you can here as possible. Not, I would be selfish, but I, I just want to stay in school and have everything as normal as possible. And when we see cases rising, if kids have sensory issues or something like that, of course, I think something's going to be made. And I think that it's important to continue to work with this every week and to monitor cases. And if they do go behind, if they get close to outdoor in June or July, the fact that I would completely said, yeah, masks are silly, there's a doubt, there's Delta, I personally know my vaccine people who are not qualified in Delta, even in states, but still, I think it's a very real issue and threat. And I just want to be proactive and not, because I'm proactive, not reactive.
And I really agree with Julie that, I mean, I think that we should, I mean, obviously taking a nuanced approach is a good thing to do, but I think that trying not to rock the vote as much as possible is something that we should definitely take into consideration here because, where we are right now with little cases in schools and every, and 99% supplies, I think is something that we can continue to work with throughout. And continue to allow us to stay in school and have in-person learning, which is far better on all levels than, you know.
All right. Any other comments?
I guess I had one other, one other thought, or two other thoughts. What I hope that our mask conversation doesn't take away from is the need and importance of vaccination and just, you know, I know that masks are great, but I, I think that one of the things we were talking about is that, you know, vaccines are free and more effective than masks. So I think that that still needs to stay forefront. And just to also kind of go on record, I can count votes, you know, I, we know how the vote is going to turn out, but I also would like to say, similar to what Jim said, is at the end of this, I am one member on a five-person board. I will be fully supporting the will of the board. So this is also not like a, I'm not against masks. I wish for a more nuanced approach, but I also believe that as a board, you know, it's, it's important that we are supportive moving forward. So just wanted to also put that.
Which we have been. I mean, I think.
Absolutely.
Since August 10th, when, I mean, I would, I was just, I can only speak for myself, but I mean, well, I mean, we've been implementing the will of the board. And so I understand we're having a vote today, but I don't think this vote changes really anything in terms of implementation of what we've been doing.
And I do understand, I've been in a situation where I was the only one board member to vote no on something. And it doesn't mean I was against something, it was just, to go to bed at night, I felt like I had to have my voice heard and I voted on the left because that was just the type of person I was. But I understand where you're coming from in that specific, you're not going to be anti Andrea, you're going to be still supporting this district like you always do, so.
That's it.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Three to two? Forward, who's forward? Anything else on the topic?
Three, two.
That's what I said, didn't I? Three, two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Nope.
All right. So we, we talked a little bit about it. So a couple of weeks ago, we asked, you know, the, the question around, you know, criteria, how we want to think about how to change the policy, I guess, change the back-to-school mask policy. And so several of you sent me really similar, really similar on criteria. And so I'll, I'll just name them quickly, and then I have a plan moving forward that I'm going to pitch by you guys, see what you like. So really, you know, we talked a little bit about, about, you know, guidance shift from, from agencies, whether it's CDC or DHHS. Vaccination rates, you know, both in terms of the general population and then in terms of students, which is a harder one to get because there's no requirement and it's an opt-in and the state would have to require vaccinations for us to really get into there. But that was one. And then a lot around just rolling averages, like what has transmission been looking like over the last couple of weeks? You know, what are we in? Red, yellow, green, you know, where are we in that? And then, you know, some, something, something around the pooling and testing, like what are there, what are informations out there that we can pull in? So I'd say that was consistent from several members in terms of high level. And so I guess what, what I would ask, and I'm going to volunteer, at least Dulce, because we spoke earlier today about this, is what would, I think would be helpful is to take some of these kind of bullet points and sort of flush them out a bit. And so there's, there's a bit more of a discussion document, I guess, for the board. Because right now, it was great to get some bullet points, but I, I think we have to dive a little bit deeper and probably get, put something together that the, all of us can wrap our heads around. And so I was going to volun, well, I, I've asked Dulce and she's agreed. I was going to volunteer, Norm, if you would be into it, because you, you two are the ones who sent me the most detailed bullets that were very similar.
Sure.
And so I, I was going to ask if you guys could work on, you know, putting, pilling a little more meat on those bones and then bringing it back here in two weeks. And we'll have it as an agenda topic for discussion. Doesn't mean we have to have a decision, but it would be something that we can discuss and kick around and sort of, and then give more guidance and kind of go to the next step that feels appropriate. And it feels sort of like, what we're going to need anyway for our next step, to take the bullets and do something a bit more. And Dulce is nodding because I think she agrees. And so, Norm, I was going to ask if you would.
As long as she's okay to work with me, I mean. All right. Yeah, no, I'd love to. That'd be great. Great work I can do.
Yeah. And I'm going to add a caveat, which is that I don't know if, that I will have, like, the prettiness of discussions, but I think that I'll, we'll be able to put together, like, be one, have some discussion, do some more research, follow it in two weeks. There's a lot to reveal.
Yeah, I think enough to, to kind of kick that ball down the road and so we can, you know, kick it around and don't, don't do too much because you might end up, four members might split and, you know, might bring you back. So I, I think whatever you guys can bring back with some initial ideas and that'll give us a good place for discussion.
When do you want that?
Two weeks.
Yep, yep, yep. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Mike, anything else on Safe Learning?
Anything else?
No.
Moving on?
Moving on.
Moving on. All right. Budget process. In your packet, you will see a draft of, I'll say, a new look budgeting process for us as a district. In there, you will see the, and I will say, anticipated because it is a significant shift for times and dates and meetings. So these are the goals. And the admin team actually was updated in the summer. They were updated last week. They've already met with people. So the budget process is already started in our district and, which is a good thing. And the goal is to have it available earlier. Michelle's going to kill me, not finalize, but getting close to those numbers before the other numbers have to roll in, GMR, things like that. But as you can see, you're going to hear from the building principals and directors themselves this year at a work session. They're going to describe their needs and, and what they're doing within the walls. Then we'll have another meeting to discuss macro level, go back, and so forth and so on. So we're hoping to wrap this up by end of October, early November, which allows for that communication and transparency through the process of budget. So really, just as, this is the anticipated stuff. We may have to shift out or in, whatever it may be, but I think those are pretty achievable goals. So any questions on that update?
I had a quick question, Mike. So we have not done a work session before as a board. What does that look like?
So a, a work session, I want to be clear, is not a board meeting.
Okay.
Okay? It'll actually be, will not be set up like this. It'll be more of a roundtable. So down here will be administrator's board. Out there can be public if they want to come, but it's really, the work, work session is here about discussion. So you'll see their main highlights, whether they may need something or whether they don't need something, whether it's staffing, you know, all those types of things. So it's, it's work, right? It's, so it's our CIP committee, it is our curriculum. So it's, it's the work that happens. And then when we come back the next meeting, at the board meeting, that's when the higher level discussion occurs. So it, it's good to have those, I'll call them less formal, casual work sessions, because it allows for a lot more flexibility in discussion. And it becomes pretty powerful. So it, it's good that we're bringing that here and, and we get to have the discussion rather than it always being at a board meeting and being a presentation. It's really, can you explain why you may need that fourth grade teacher?
And the only other thing, it would be one topic meeting, right? So we want to have all the other fun topics, kind of back to back, it would be, it would be strictly for that one item.
Just budget, that's it. Budget work session. Nothing but numbers and what's going on with the money.
You should call it nothing but numbers.
So I mentioned, maybe we're one of the, the chair now. I may, I might be out. If this is approved, I'd like to send us to the budget committee. They're very excited about sitting through these and watching us because they've never done it in public. So if this is final, I'll send it over to them.
Yeah, we're not voting on this, so this is just.
Yeah. Okay. But they, you know, I'll give it in my update.
We're going to post it, same thing. These are the things that are going to come out through the social media platform, stuff like that. But you, after today, you can certainly share it with them. You have it in the, you have a digital one in your file.
Okay, perfect.
Norm, we, we have always done our budget in public.
No, I, we never had a work, like a workbook section, like a roundtable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They're, they're very excited about being a part of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
They are the budget committee for a reason.
Yeah.
Anything else on the budget calendar?
I just have a question about how you would see or the need for the finance committee to work into this, Mike.
Well, the good part about what you guys are working on already, and I know last year was the first year, right, of the finance committee, is we're not, you're now going to become, you're more the team, right? So you, you probably know some more forecasting further than myself, but you're going to weave in, really in the budget work sessions, it's going to be of importance. But also coming out of those work sessions will be objectives for the finance committee. So we're all going to take pieces of the puzzle and put it together. And then really, did you present at each board meeting through the budgeting process? I guess I'm asking a question.
Not really, no. It was more of a, I mean, there was a lot of educational process that went on last year in terms of the mechanics and how things were devised and terminology that was used, more so for the public that wanted to tune into that, but also to educate.
So this year, it's you, Dulce, and.
You and.
So we're there all the time now, anyway. So like I said, it's just going to be interwoven into what the work we're doing.
So I think, you know, you and I can talk about this, but it would be good to have, I think the one thing education-wise moving forward is, you know, we've talked about moving away from a budgeting concept that includes a fund balance to one that does not. And I think it would be good for us to have a finance committee meeting to really sort of flesh that out and why we would do that, what are the pros, what are the cons, so that that can be a part of a board presentation so people understand. Because that's a big shift for this community.
I anticipated that on the 12th. So that would have came out after, no, not, I'm saying that, we're going to meet. Don't get me wrong, sorry. But that communication would have come out of the macro level goals for this year.
Okay.
So that would come from, from you at that meeting on, here's where we've come, here's where we're going, and here's the why. Yeah. So we can meet as, okay. We'll set that up for, you know, end of September, definitely. We see each other all the time with CIP anyway, so.
He said it.
Speaking of which.
Speaking of which.
Are we ready?
Any other questions on budget? Nope?
Maybe.
Okay.
I'm ready. I'm so excited for this presentation, Dulce.
It's going to be amazing. There's no guests.
Is your popcorn?
Not that amazing.
Turn off the lights. I'll turn around.
It's going to rain a lot of us.
Yes, it is. I'll turn like this. I'll just look at yours.
Matt, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? Right. Okay.
Hold on. Matt, can you hear her? Are you able to pick up this?
I believe so.
Okay.
There's a mic right here.
You're bringing the mic.
Oh, okay. It's right there. Okay.
As you can hear, they're sensitive for every tap of the pen.
Okay, cool. So as I mentioned, I brought myself, Michelle, and Mike to make up the capital recovery committee, which is a really good project. I'll be planning on planning the school some this year to talk a little bit about it because plans are due to the town to review by the 17th. What I wanted to do today was just do a quick overview of CIP for people who may not be super informed about it, read the process, a few key notes that we have come out of our discussions, look at the fiscal year '23 request, which is what we're looking for. It is pretty good cycle and then talk through the next steps. And then we can go through questions if you want to, obviously. Okay, so for the purposes of this school district, the town, capital projects have been defined as always outside of normal operations and maintenance and have a following characteristics. One, it grows costs at least $10,000. Their useful life is of five years. They're non-recurring. And then it could also be any project requiring bond. And so that follows a review. It's not the day-to-day nuts and bolts that sort of what's running the school. In terms of how this all works, this has been a really tough process, I think, for Rob and I to actually get the speed on, help speak for Rob, because I'm trying to develop what the board-facing plan is. And ideally, as you advise me in our goals, we want not just a three-year plan, but also a 10- or 20-year plan. Again, we put our facilities, that will ideally be developed with input from the administrators and facilities team, and even from, like, we've talked about, from the staff at the schools, if they see something that's not where they like to be, just letting us know so we can start to put it into longer term. We've worked with Mike and Michelle. We're going to prioritize, we present to all of you guys, because you are the board, you need to know. And then we send everything we want to do in particular fiscal year, as well as the longer-term plan to the town and CIP committee for review and whatever it is. These are people who represent the town, they oversee the town stuff as well as schools at this point. And this is what they do, right? Like, they really want to be able to look at how we're allocating funds, how we're blending these two things together. It doesn't make sense what we're doing. Ideally, they'll welcome back to us and say, yeah, that makes sense. And then work begins and we start to think about our really important school district meeting and make some thought out. Really quickly, just to start out, this is the school district. We have just over 158,000 square feet, which is pretty wild. Our replacement cost per square foot is $300.
We lost you.
Yeah. The replacement value is, oh, yeah.
It's the chord, probably.
Yeah.
No, this is totally out.
Good thing we're in the budget process.
Oh, there we go.
Don't touch anything.
Okay, so we're at, like, just over 47,000 for the replacement value based off of our property allowance. We currently have two, our property are for two privates, we're at just close to 35,000. So this is like a pretty real asset that we want to protect and maintain and improve. Our recommended capital renewal rate, right, would be 2% of that value. So in ideal world, this happens in, I think, almost zero, Michelle would probably know, zero, this is a little trick. We would be looking at between close to $700,000 and $900,000 a year to improve and even maintain our, our property assets in the schools in this district. We are definitely not there. We will, maybe we'll get there someday. But we are very mindful of what that would put onto the taxpayers in this town. And we want to think about how we balance the tax rate versus keeping our whole estate. So what's coming up out of our discussions throughout the course of the last three weeks is we are ending the fiscal 21-year-end cycle at just over $166,000. We just added $150K from the budget and are taking out $42,000 for the performance contracts, which is essentially lease financing, as someone knows. This brings us to about $274,000 in property. For this coming year, we have projected $194K coming out over improvements to make this coming year. It's called fiscal year '22, in case you haven't seen what the fiscal years are. That leaves us at $122K. We are be, we're thinking we have another $150K to come back in, and that will get us to $272,000 in our community trust fund. Based on our plans, which I'll review in a minute, we're asking for another $52,000 in capital expenditures, which means we'll obviously have to find a delta of a, a thing that has to come through a warrant, ideally as part of a school district meeting. Looking forward over the next few years, there are, we have a bunch, and I'll show you in a minute, some pretty big picture items, which are, you know, around $100,000. We take those out and then potentially bond them. We need about $200,000 a year for sort of the smaller maintenance trust expenditures. This is sort of in the realm of what we can think about being raised for a warrant. And then we really want to be able to figure out post fiscal year '25, '26, to think about that 10-year, 20-year plan to get to a point where we're raising an appropriate amount, expanding appropriate amounts to be able to where they are. It's worth noting that we are also looking at researching with three different options for the SAU building, and that's something we're going to be evaluating over the course of the next year, if we talk about that in a better manner. Really quickly, while I have everyone, because I think that this is a really important thing for people to know. This is, this is available on the school district website. This is our CIP long-term planning position for our plan. So overview that I showed you, it has the top and the bottom of every single school that we have. So you can see fiscal year '19, and then it might go out towards fiscal year '35. You would be able to see here, fiscal year '23 is what we're currently talking about. And you'd be able to see sort of expenditures of their plan based off of feedback from the administrators for future looking years. You can go through the same thing with Maple, Hafn Middle High School, SAU, Technology, Matt, it's pretty funny. And then you can see this, I'll compile out of the maintenance trust. And it starts even looking back to our back to school in '13. So if you really want to see what have we been doing for the building, that's all accounted for here. Just as I had that from what people were talking, what I was mentioning, for some of those big ticket items, you might see that we will likely need to have a boiler at the middle high school, which that will run around $140K. These are things that we get estimates for and then lower plan and quotes. So we have several of these items coming up, $125, $185, $400K, 210, 218. And there's some big things that we might want to look at. Well, interest rates are low, thinking about bonding, so that we're not having to raise those through a warrant on a yearly basis. This is part of what we're doing. You can also see just over notes, we have our special education trust, vehicle trust, technology and health trust fund, and then the tax rate stabilization fund. So there's a lot of information that's in here. We are very aware that if you are not living and really excel like some of us do, that you might not love this format. We're working on a couple of different ways to get this to be a little bit more easy for them, if you want to go and see what's really going on. Any one of the town can access this in the format. Give questions, definitely feel free to let us know. I'm very happy to try to work with them here to figure it out. If you want to see a collapse, you just over notes, there is the fiscal year '23, which just looks at fiscal year '22 moving forward, and that it's collapsed, but only by, so this is something that we are working on. We will be talking about a lot. This is part of sort of stabilizing our financial planning for the school district. So that's kind of where we are. In terms of specific fiscal year '23, we are allocating for a boiler at Carroll Martin. The boiler might stay with us. It would be great if it did. But given that we might have two or three boilers to go in the next few years, we want to make sure that we are not hot-handed in the middle of the traffic system. We're also looking at a new walk-in freezer at Carroll Martin, Skylights at Maple, caving in Maple. I need to bring it here at the middle high school. We've found some replacements, which are amazing. It's a normal club, and everyone has requested something differently, as I do for the gym. Looking at an update to HVAC controls, and again, a payment for that for lease financing performance contract that we have. That brings us to our $52,000. So what we need to do here is answer any questions you guys have, what we've looked at. We're going to continue to work on formatting, so anyone who's in the public can sort of go through it. And then really, what we're trying to figure out is sort of that three-year plan, and then that longer-term plan, including some sort of element of a long element there. That's where we are. Any questions? Norm?
Sure. Great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Really, really great job. This might be a question for Michelle. If we, you know, one of the goals is for us to be able to plan long-term, you know, CIP. Is it possible to do a warrant for a three-year warrant if we know what we need to put in the CIP for those three years? Or does it have to be one at a time?
One at a time.
Yeah. Okay.
But if we think that there's something that's going to go, like, if we know it's going to be superior placed, we can basically move it up a year, right? And do it all on purpose. Because like, big ticket, roof, boilers, stuff like that, we won't have to wait for it to die. We know that it's almost definitely going to die.
Okay.
And it's sort of, you have to try a little bit.
The only, the only other thing you could do is bond it, right? So that would.
You mentioned the B word. What were you, what was, what was the big ticket that you were talking about potentially that would need that?
Uh, group things of $400K. There's a couple boilers that need to go.
Here are three boilers. There's actually a couple units in this building that actually are supplied by R22, which if they go, you can't get R22 anymore.
It's R22, I'm sorry.
It's a refrigerator.
Free own. Oh, it's a free own, okay.
So, so there's those, which those are like $200,000 each. And I think there was one in another building, too. So altogether, like, $140 for each of the boilers. So right there, there's three boilers.
Yeah, I'm going to do a good, yeah, some of that.
Yeah, $185, ten.
Was that the, also the group over at Maple, that we, I mean, over at Maple, we were talking about, Michelle, that needs replaced in 2025?
Yep.
Okay. So what's the total on that, that you're talking about lumped together?
A couple point seven. And I can put that into a list as well, hard and I feel like.
Abicate for bond, but just hear me out on it. You know, it was something that was discussed at our last budget committee, just how interest rates are very low. I know the town has talked about other parts of their, looking to refinance. Again, it's important to look at what the rates are now, what they should be later down the road, and that impact it is to taxpayers down the road.
Yeah, and you know, yeah. And then part of this is we also want to make sure that we're layering it along with the problems with town, what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
For the next few years. So we didn't talk about, I mean, we're not quite getting off this here, but we're not.
We're not abating.
We're not reaching a bond this year, trying to do that. But we want to provide visibility towards a plan in the next two, three, four years, to be able to think about if we're going to try to do that and lower costs, where the lower cost of capital, what that was like.
Yep, agree.
Dulce, can you remind me when the performance contract is over?
When is it over?
When is it over?
Check down there. I think it's, someone in the city of 2030, so go down.
It's only 10 years old, I think.
Great.
2034. Yeah.
Sounds like it's like a 20-year.
That's one of those things that could be great, but if you have really, if you are in a different interest rate environment, that might give a thing to look at. But if we're in a very, very low interest rate environment, then it's preferable.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
This is good.
Yep. So in terms of the next steps, again, we can submit this to, for due to the town CIP. We're going to do some more sprucing up of this stuff, and then there's talk to go alongside it. We'll do all that. Everybody, any, make a right slide so you guys can see or on us.
No, I appreciate that you're also working on, on making a more easily accessible document. I think that even if you are well-versed in Excel, that this can be really overwhelming. So I applaud your efforts.
Yeah, you, Rob and Dulce, who are on the finance, they're all trying to, we go back to educating community. Sometimes the education in the documents helps us, even though, excuse me, we are being communicative, but sometimes people just need our visual learners. So this helps putting it into that type of format. So the work and the time is unbelievable what they're doing.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
And I think in the discussions, the budget committee moving forward, this will be very helpful to see the work that we're doing. This is, this is great stuff.
I think this question makes sense. So as you're looking at the out years, you're doing the three or four-year outlook. And I assume you're not planning on just doing expenditures year to year, right? So we're going to, we're going to bump up, you know, the expenditures from, you know, if $144 is needed next year.
Yeah.
We might put $250 in.
Yeah.
In order to start saving up for the year four, five, and six expenditures. So the, because I think it's important to put more in, because I think for the, for our taxpayers and for the tax rate, having some consistency in appropriations makes a lot of sense.
Yes. And the only thing, being able to have a little bit more of a buffer, like, a lot more of the buffer, when you look at what are your, your expenditure should be, we might not get there, but we should at least be looking to build that amount. And also, so at some point in the future, let me guess, another one of those big ticket items, it's not, you know, it's not going to kill us.
Michelle, if we, we have an imaginary fund balance, just for, and can we, can we ask the town meeting or the school district meeting to, to put some of that into the building maintenance and repair trust? Or does it, is that not an appropriate place to, I don't know what the right words are to park the money?
Yeah. So which we've done before, like, we, we say, raise an appropriate, I'll just say, $200,000. And of that, $50,000 to come from fund balance. So yes, that's what definitely you could do.
But only for the next fiscal year?
Correct.
So it can't be something you just?
Correct. But what you could do is if you had fund balance during the year, and you were not looking to return it to the taxpayers, right, because you already net your amount that you wanted to, you could knock something off the CIP.
That's true.
That actually then, in essence, does a similar thing, but in a different way.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. That's right.
And the town, I think there's a nice job of a particular warrant article to their maintenance of their CIP plan, and they do that as a specific separate item. And so it's something that we should, you know, there's definitely a way to do this that this meeting could be receptive to and that we should talk about.
When is your presentation to CIP, the town?
The 17th. They may have an ask, so you submit things, and then they might ask you questions.
September?
Lucky.
September?
Yeah.
Okay.
Friday.
Friday.
And I just got, I'm so happy that you're bringing that there. I mean, when I first on the board, when I heard that we weren't necessarily always there every year, we opened and transparent, I was kind of like, what? Why not? And now to hear that we are, you know, last year we went there, this year, and just continuing that relationship with them. So they know what they're doing, they know what we're doing. So it affects the tax rate, all is one town. So I think it's just, it's just good stuff.
Yeah. And I mean, this is a living, creative government, so something that should be renewed and reviewed on a regular basis. Michelle is really good at working with the facilities team to understand what's out there, but to be able to see what might be able to be shifted, we're looking at your overheads. So, any questions, if anyone's just on hand?
Thanks, Dulce. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, guys.
All right. I apologize to everyone. I forgot to mention it earlier. There is a sign-up over by the door for public comment, and I know that's coming up in a little bit. So if you do want to do public comment, if you could sign up, that would be outstanding. I apologize for not mentioning that earlier in the meeting. With that, we are going to move to the consent agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flynn to talk through the personnel report and the superintendent report, and then Ms. Clark for the. and then, um, Ms. Clark for the financials.
Thank you. Okay, so moving into personnel, um, another new thing that we've done, we've put the letter in the, in the file for you guys to review. It's both in your folder and also, uh, that's another thing that I, we're going to start doing so you get an idea. So I don't have to discuss anything that may or may not have come through. So just a valuable piece for you guys to understand why someone may have made a decision, um, so that was also in your folder. So with that comes the resignation of Maureen McAuliffe, um, real loss to our district, there's no doubt about it. She was, she was an all-star, so, uh, she's a, she's at Maple Street, so that's a resignation. Uh, moving on to new hires, um, Tucker is going to be an instructional assistant at Maple Street, which is big for us. Still looking for employment, we have a lot of openings in our I A department, so feel free to certainly fill out something and we'll get you, we'll get you working. Brianna Taylor is another big win for the high school, um, she's going to be moving in, actually started yesterday, so that's another big gap for us to fill. Uh, and finally, um, Chris and Rebecca kind of had the same dance I did at the beginning of summer, um, and now they have solidified an office manager, uh, and Lauren Magnin, does that sound right? Okay, thank you. So Ari began the work as two, so, um, we know how important those positions are. I can't tell Jody enough how much she's improved, uh, just the S A U, but my life and Michelle's life, so, um, certainly made a big difference. She keeps coming back, which is great, and she's kind of moving in, she's putting stuff on her desk, so that's worked out for me. And then I'm actually, if you don't mind, Michelle, I'm going to ask you to speak, these are more of those positions that are, that are newer for me. Is there anything that you want to point out? This is, this is the additional contract stuff that we've talked about, extra sections, things of that nature. Is there anything specific you want to talk about?
Um, just, um, one specific thing is, um, like, I added it to the E S R, uh, funding sheet today. Um, we did get approval from, um, the state for, um, some additional, um, foreign language, um, support at the middle high school. Um, so that additional support will come out of the E S R funds. Um, the bus monitor and the after-school bus duty, those are things that just were not on the last nomination, they're usual ones. Um, and because we, we are F T E driven, um, you know, we have somebody, um, that's an I A that's not a one point O, that will go to a one point O, and then the last one is based on in, uh, sign-ups, um, for family and consumer science here at the middle high school. Um, instead of being a point five, it needs to be a point six.
So those would be those adjustments, um, I will become more familiar with them as, as we move forward. But as I said before, a lot of enrollment drives a lot of some of the, the middle high school ones. More specifically, the, the world language help, uh, that's, that's a, a big win for us. We had someone who's, who's willing to pick up some extra classes so that we are able to support those students and that progress. And Mr. Kelly's communicated to, to those families in which it's impacted, that's why you may not have heard about it, which is fine. But there, we have a good plan in place to, to help all those students, so, uh, kudos to Mr. Kelly and Ms. Gagnon for developing that plan. And, and the employee, um, is, is a rising star, and, and we'll talk more about it once it's solidified, so. Moving forward to, any questions on personnel, sorry? Good, okay, moving forward to superintendent's report, um, I, I really just want to thank, uh, the faculty and staff. You know, I, I've mentioned it several times, um, students have only been back for ten days, and we haven't experienced this return ever. Because two years ago was a normal return to, to leaving because of the pandemic, and then last year was not a normal return. And then this year, we're returning with different rules, all that stuff. Uh, so the faculty and the staff have just done an outstanding job with the construction that's going on in these facilities, with furniture that hasn't shown up, um, with anything that, it has been a disruptive start of the school year for our faculty and staff. And they've continued, as the student said, have continued to roll with it. I think it's forced us a lot in our profession, but it, it's certainly starting to settle down, and we're going to start to get into a groove, as I've mentioned. So that goes to also thanking the students and staff, talking about being resilient, the, the students are, are able to roll with it as well. They've done an outstanding job, um, with, uh, outdoor classrooms with science, or, um, trying to find new spaces and, and availability. Uh, they've done, they've done a great job, so thank you to them for sure. Uh, I know Norm mentioned it earlier, but the tragedy that happened in Bow, um, you know, it's, it's a small, small state, as we said. And that actually occurred while we were at our meeting on Friday. So what, what we have done, we've, we've connected with the principal of, uh, of Bow and, and partnered. Any, any, anything they need, we've, we've, we've reached out a lending hand. It really is a small town and, and, and a, a close-knit community. It has impacted our students as well, uh, as you can imagine, um, but we, we, we have a good jo, uh, the, the middle high school and all of our team has done a great job of supporting any students that need it, uh, and also partnering with any communities. I know the parents have done a great job in this community of already starting fundraisers, things of that nature. But, um, anything that we can do to help, we've, we've certainly been, been doing. I wanted to throw an update in here for the community, it's called Parent Square, um, we did officially purchase it. That's going to be our new communication, um, program, I guess that's the best way to say that. Uh, we're getting rid of the listserv, the outdated listserv, um, so you'll see S M S, you'll see emails, you'll see, as we work through the steps, it's a very powerful program. Obviously, it'll start high level with, uh, administration communication, then you can able, you are able to work it down into teacher, uh, subgroups, things of that nature. But as you start to see the rollout here, I wanted you to say, what, you know, what is this? It's, it's going to be basically our, um, inclement weather, all that type of stuff, all those things will come out, um, through Parent Square. So that's something you'll start to see soon.
Mike, is that going to be an opt-in, where, where people who are on the listserv are going to opt-in for it, or are you still working on?
That's a good discussion. We are, so i- it's connected a lot differently, so it pulls our data from Aspen, so contacts, all of it goes in. So you'll get an initial, everyone gets an initial message that basically allows you to change your settings. So everyone's automatically registered, and then you'll get the thing that says, I don't want text messages, I don't want emails, anything like that. So, um, remember, we want to be able to hit a greater number, and we're starting, we see gaps with the listserv, I keep saying that. Any questions on that?
No, that's.
Okay, good. Construction update, it's just, I, I want to be open and transparent, we had our building committee yesterday. Uh, I know Norm might be coming back to this, but, um, the, the science rooms, we feel that two of the four will be done by the end of this week, and the other two might roll into Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. Um, that has to do with services, plumbing, electric, that type of stuff, all trying to marry together to finish the rooms. So that's just a quick update on that. Uh, we talked a lot about, I know Michelle's going to get to some donations, but this was an interesting one to me today that I thought was as relevant. They did it last year, and they're doing it again. Uh, a community member, Brian Johnson's going to be doing poison ivy spray. And so we talk about money that comes in all the time, but he, his company's donating services, uh, so they'll be spraying off-campus hours to help eliminate, I mean, he went into some pretty specifics on the stuff that he's going to try and eliminate, but, uh, uh, that stuff's great. So anytime a community member wants to participate, we appreciate it. And I just want to finalize my, my spot with saying how great it's been to return to school. It, I talked to a parent today that said it's pretty, pretty darn close to normal, uh, and that's, that's pretty important to us. Routine, we meet with Max and Julie, I, it's, it's great to hear the conversations they're having, whether it be about Chromebooks, or dress code, or parking, um, but it's that again, it's not the what-if. It's not, are we going to be in school next week, are we going to be online, or it's, we're really talking about things now that we're back. So, um, with the staff and the students and the, and, and all the positive messages that have come our way from families and, and support of what we're doing. And, and the other one that I laughed at today is my kid comes home tired, and who doesn't love that? So we appreciate all that, um, you know, we're, we're really, I mean, ten days in a row, that's big, and, and we're going to continue to, to, to provide that. So, um, I just want to thank, uh, the community and, and everyone involved to, to making sure that it's a safe environment, and we're going to continue to have school. So that's it for the superintendent's update.
Questions for Mike?
Nope.
None? All right, Michelle?
Sure, um, so as, uh, Mike had mentioned, um, that, you know, thank you to Brian Johnson, he did it this last year, so, um, can't thank him enough. The other item I have is just, um, a donation that's under the threshold, so it doesn't have to be, um, approved by the board, but it's just a mention and thanks again to the P T A for the Maple Street School Summer Bingo Literacy, um, that they donated three hundred dollars for.
That's great.
That's it?
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Any questions for Michelle? I think that was the briefest update you've ever given us.
I know, right?
Trying to get back to normal.
Man. All right, um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, um, so this brings us to our public comment portion, um, and so we have several people who have signed up, um, and so I will, Sabrina already knows she's first. Maybe I'll mix it up a little bit now, so Sabrina Dunlap followed by Sarah Mattson Dustin, yeah, and the mic's over there.
Mix it up, you little sex.
Thank you.
Stay over here. This is on?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Sabrina Dunlap, nine Glue Hill Road, um, so a few comments. First of all, I happen to have a conversation with one of the vendors who does pool testing today, and so I was going to comment on it. There's more info that I got from this, this woman, um, she was just looking for a rep from the town, so she contacted me, because I'm on the select board. So I'm not here speaking on behalf of the select board. Anyway, um, Mike, I just was interested to hear your comments because she actually said they have found with elementary school kids, it's not disruptive. It's super quick, it's a low swap. She commented that, uh, it's been like pretty easy with the opt-in issue, even in southern states where they have, you know, lower vaccination rates. So anyway, it was interesting, I don't know which vendors you've talked to, and I forgot the name of this one, but it was a really good conversation, and it seems like, at the very least, you know, continuing the conversation and looking into it more is definitely worth it, just another mitigation layer. And then I just wanted to, oh, and the other thing was, um, this woman said they have, their turnaround time is more like twenty-four hours, and forty-eight is the max. So they also use local labs too, so they often courier the test tubes to local labs, which I thought was great. And then I just wanted to comment on the, the mask discussion. I get the low numbers, I think it's great, but I would just urge you to continue to think, like, we want to keep the genie in the bottle. And I read an article, uh, today actually about schools, there's really like a three to four week lag time, where it seems great, and then you hit that point, and it's like, then the spread comes. And so I really hope that doesn't happen here, but I think we should be super cautious until the numbers start to go in the right direction in the state and our county. I know you're focused on Hopkins, which is great, however, all the numbers are going in the wrong way right now in the state, and it's super concerning. So I think the focus should continue to be, on all the mitigation we can do, we should do it. I would also just say, you know, Jim, your comment about like a flexible plan, um, the refrain about mental health and masks seems to be entirely about kids who somehow don't want to wear masks or can't, and that, that harms their mental health. But first of all, there can be accommodations made for them. And second of all, I would just urge you to think about the kids who have physical issues and for whom COVID is a much bigger threat than your average healthy kid, and the anxiety they feel every single day, and the anxiety and mental health issues they have around kids who maybe aren't wearing their masks properly or don't have them on. So I just would encourage you guys to think about, you know, the breadth of the mental health issues at play here. And finally, one quick comment, okay, I'll finish up logistical issue. Andrea, you mentioned focusing on vaccines. The town recently did a vaccine van through the D H S, um, we had five people come, which is, sounds like nothing, but it actually is quite successful. However, I was thinking it could be a great thing to do with the schools. It was super easy to set up, the select board did it, um, so definitely look into that as a potential option. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Sarah?
Hi, everybody, Sarah Mattson Dustin, five seventeen Dustin Road, I'll be really brief. I looked at my calendar from last year during this meeting, and I just wanted to mention that last September, my kids were in school at Harold Martin, six days in September. In February, they were in school five days in the entire month. And so this week, my kids will have been in the building at Harold Martin more days than they were in all of those two months put together. And so I just want all of us to not lose sight of the fact that that is transformational change and a huge accomplishment. And I think that I can definitely see in my kids the impact that this very close to normal is having on how quickly they're learning and on their spirits. And, um, so I just wanted to say that's great, and hopefully we can keep doing all of these things that's going to get us to that hundred and eight. So that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you.
That's only a hundred and seventy to go.
Um, so those are the, those are the only two sign-ups I have for public comment, um, is there anybody else who wishes to comment? All right, um, and so our last item of business is my favorite, which is other business, old business, and committee updates. So I don't know if there's any committee updates that we, um, I know we heard from C I P, if there's any, any other committees?
Yeah, so I'm going to, can I do budget committee first?
You can do whatever you want, Norm.
So I'm going to do budget committee first, so I think, um, I think something that's really important to discuss about the budget committee to me was, you know, if you lived in this town for, as long as I have, usually on that, one voice you always heard at the budget committee was Janet. And, um, you know, I, I'm sad to report that Janet is no longer on budget committee right now, um, but, um, I just wanted to send really big warm wishes to her and good vibes because, um, working with Janet in the budget committee, Jim, you've been there too, this whole board has worked with Janet in capacity. Just, it's been great working with her, and, um, just wish her nothing but love and support and everything. Deb Norris will be replacing her on the, um, on the budget committee with us, so just thought that was most important thing. Um, the, the meeting went well, uh, I think, um, one thing that was really discussed in the, in the budget committee was our timeline. I encouraged the budget committee to come to our meeting, really to kind of understand the process, and really encouraged that's going to be, um, quite different than it was before. And then, um, Ken Trom kind of scared me, uh, he said, well, maybe the school will go first. And I think it was a, it was, it was an interesting discussion because it's potential that if we do have a number, um, November, and the select board has not gone first, it's a discussion that maybe the school board will go first, would probably be the first time ever. So it's a discussion for us to, to, um, to talk about. The other thing in the meeting that was, that was, I thought that was important to, to bring up, um, was, um, Tom did a great presentation on, you know, factors, what's going on with the tax rate, with multiple, multiple types of, uh, things that he could talk more about. But it, it was really good, talked about, you know, impact with, with, uh, um, you know, certain ages, talked about, you know, salary, house values and all that, how it's correlated with the tax impact throughout the years, just stuff for us to look at, you know, the cost of inflation and all that, stuff that I've never seen on the budget committee before, and it was a real good discussion, um, and I really appreciate that, that, um, that information that he did. One important thing that I think I need to bring up to the board that is going to come up, and it's important that we talk about this in the beginning of the budget process, is the tax assessment value. We had a discussion last year with Michelle and how we mentioned that we follow the D R A, and the select board had different values. I support this board, I mean, the board, I represent you guys, but I do believe it's, it's worth a discussion with the select board. I made that note to Ken. I'm trying to see what number they hit, um, regardless if they're close to it, based on what they proposed last year, because I do believe it's a little confusing, come, go into a budget process, and we have, we don't agree on the evaluation of the town. I might ask the board to differ from that, but I would, I do think it's important by the finance committee to, um, bring a recommendation to us if, if this board supports that, or we have a roundabout discussion with Michelle, whatever, or we wait to have that meeting with the select board, which I don't know when it's going to happen, um, it's important that we get this before the budget process.
Was there, I don't remember, was there a recommendation from the budget committee, which number to use last year, or did they kind of punt it to us? That's what I kind of recall happening, but I don't remember.
I think that they basically said move to the select board thing, and then it was like a lot of that before, because we, we were well into our process.
Okay.
So I think that the thought is maybe do that earlier.
So I'm, I, I represent the board, I do think it's an important discussion to have with the select board, or have the finance committee. I just think it's important we have this in the forefront now, and I'm not sure how we, we should proceed with that.
I think the finance, it would be great to have you guys look at that. Just throw stuff around all night.
My recollection from last year is we asked Michelle how many other schools there are during the state.
That's right.
Did anything other than follow? D R A?
Yeah, so we, yeah.
I believe the response was zero.
Correct.
So the conventional wisdom was, this is what all schools do, you know, well. You know, but maybe this is just a difference between how a municipality works versus a school district works. But I'm assuming that answer is not gonna change.
But I, I mean, I'm open to having the discussion. I mean, after, really, I wanna see proof. And I'm really curious what that number will be in October. If, did the select board and Neo and all their research of understanding what the tax values, value assessment is in town, did they? Did they come up with what they promised? It is, collecting data and looking at trends is something that I'm very interested in. I mean, you guys, look what you're doing over here. But, I mean, it's important for us to look at that and really think outside the box. I don't like betting against Michelle. Trust me, I don't. I don't, trust me, Michelle. But let's, it's, it's a discussion, I think.
Yeah, and I think the other two parts is they could also pump to our value. And the other thing that we could do, if there's still a split, is just make sure it's highlighted, that if our, like, it's what the values are that the tax rates are based on of. Because that's the way it's gonna fall out that way.
Cause I think that ended up being the issue last year is that stuff appeared artificially inflated because of the two different rates.
They just wanna be more apples.
Apples and apples, yeah.
So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's good that we discuss this now before we go in there.
Definitely.
We can talk about it.
You know, I, I have mentioned to Ken about a joint meeting as having that, as a discussion. I'm not sure if, you know, if, if that's the place or that we have a recommendation from ours to go to them and, and bridge in it. But I do think in order to get there, we will have to probably meet. I don't know, but that's something just I threw at Ken in the meeting that needs to probably happen real quick or something.
And, um, well, we can talk, I think it'd be good to get the information from, because the board, are they, are they going? Well, we can ask them. I don't need to ask you what they might do.
That was, that, yeah, it was a, it was a great meeting. Tom, Tom has some more work he's gonna bring back to the budget committee. Basically continue having discussions on what the tax rate impact has been over the course of the year, based on, um, house values, you know, based on age groups, everything. I mean, basically showing us data that we can look at. I don't know where he has the time to do it, but, uh, he, uh, he did a great job really breaking it down that the, that the budget committee supported. So it was amazing.
Nice.
So, um, that's all for the budget committee unless you have any questions. I can move over to the building committee. So we had a building committee meeting yesterday. It went well. We are closer and closer to the finish line. I'm, I'm so excited and I can't tell you with the support of, of Mike and, and Michelle and Jay and BPS, everyone has just been such great work on this project. Yeah, as Mike mentioned, uh, we do have a little bit of a delay in the science lab, but we are able, we're still able to use the outsides. These kids are still getting their science in. We had a little bit of a hiccup with electric, electrical, electrical work over at, at the Maple Schools Lab. I'm not sure if that's been fixed yet, but, uh, we're very close to it.
Yeah, it became a priority.
Yeah. And then the last thing I'd have to say is that there's been a little bit of a delay with F and E, um, with WB Mason. Mike and I were in a meeting last week with WB Mason to kinda go over when things are, we're gonna, are gonna come in. But, you know, of this whole project, we've had very minor delays. And I can tell you right now, as someone who works in supply chain, it's very hard to get anything through, um, distributors or whatnot. I think the goal is, you know, we're gonna have an additional meeting in October. We're still gonna probably let this go for a couple more meetings. And I think the next discussion that I'll be bringing here will be what we get back in the project. There is some type of value that we're gonna get. It's, Mike will be going to his leadership team and we'll get, we'll be getting information from them, what they're gonna want and needs, um, for the district. And I just kinda give this board an overview of what came back. At the conclusion of the project, um, this board will be getting a detailed report on the whole project of every dime that was spent, every change that we did. And basically show this community how the bond was spent. And then of course, once we approve that, it'll go to the public, um, moving forward. And then after that, it'll be one year of basically a warranty that, I'm sorry. The next step will be BPS will be around for, you know, months and months right now, doing a check, checkbox on things that need to be done. Basically a warranty for a year or so. But we are, we are almost done. And, uh, you, this board should be very proud of what it's done. I know I am, and this community has gotten a, a great, well improved district.
Nice, nice work. Any other committee updates or reports or questions for Norm? Any of the above? Or any other business? Any new business? All right. So we do have, um, a need for non-public. Two different topics, one under A for personnel and one under C for reputation. And so it asks-
And we're gonna add negotiations to that.
You beat me to it.
Okay, sorry.
And we're gonna have, uh, it's not, it's not a, uh, it's not a non-public, it's a non-meeting, but we'll have a discussion on negotiations as well. So is there a motion to go on the non-public under RSA 91A colon 3, Roman 2A for personnel and C for reputation?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's a roll call, so Dulce?
Dulce, you'll tell my first?
Rob?
Rob, yes.
Norm, yes.
Yes. I am simulating.
No, you did a good job. And Jim is, yes. And so, um, we're gonna go into non-public session. And we will do no other business other than to adjourn the meeting when we come out. Thank you all. Thank you all. Have a good night.